All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Live from downtown Temecula, we'll convene this meeting of the Temecula City Council on March the 12th. What a cool prelude music. Are you guys still here, the Chaparral High School newsies?
Nope.
Did you guys leave? Hey, newsies, excellent job! All right, we're gonna start our meeting off with an invocation by Pastor Frank Medalis of Calvary Chapel Bible Fellowship. Pastor Frank, are you here? Come on up. And then Skylar Temple is going to take care of our flag salute. Please rise.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the many blessings you have given us, Lord, for the ability to be here, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you would be able, Lord, to give our mayor, Lord, and the city council, Lord, the ability to govern, Lord, to be able, Lord, to... to heat each point, Lord, with solidarity and with wisdom, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you would just be upon them, Lord, in Jesus's name we thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Edwards, even though my nameplate says Matt Ron, it is I sitting in this seat, because I'm usually at the end, but he's not here, so I'm closer.
It may mess up the vote, though, just so you know.
Oh, yeah. Do I need to sit there?
No, you're fine.
I just want to be closer to you, Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Schwank?
I am here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigard?
And the mayor's here. Councilmember Ron, Dr. Ron, is back in Washington DC doing some heavy, heavy lobbying for the French Valley Parkway with Department of Transportation and our Congressman Ken Calvert. So wish him well. He works very hard for the city. Now is the time for presentations and proclamations. And geez, a mayor doesn't often have a chance to say this, but there's a new sheriff in town. Okay? I'd like to introduce newly-elected Sheriff Chad Bianco and his staff. Sheriff, come on down.
It doesn't get old hearing that. I won't say it too awfully much, but you can say it as much as you want.
So I'm not the first one?
No, you're not the first. And I hope you're not the last.
Okay, cool.
And Councilmember Edwards, they changed your name, so you're in the right place.
Oh, good, thank you.
You're good. Thank you for having us here. I just wanted to introduce myself and my staff, or all of you, your sheriff's executive staff, the top three are back there. Assistant Sheriff...
Bring them down. Bring them down, Sheriff. Come on down. You got about seriously 25,000 people at home watching.
Really?
Yeah, give or take. Depends on what else is on TV.
So, these are my three assistant sheriffs. We have six chiefs that also run... that each of them are assigned two chiefs that run the different divisions. Our patrol division is run by Assistant Sheriff Rob Gunzel. Our corrections division by Assistant Sheriff Ralph Vergara. And Dennis Rumman, our Assistant Sheriff over administration and everything else that we tell him he's over. I really, I'm happy to be here. I want to tell you how happy I am to be a part of the sheriff's departments that's serving you, serving your city, and serving the residents of Temecula. And we look forward to continuing a great relationship, making it stronger. We really are... my personal belief is that relationships are everything in life. And I really plan to build on what we already have and make it stronger as we go forward to provide you guys with the best possible law enforcement service.
Sheriff, thanks. We have one of the best chiefs of police in Lisa McConnell that a city can have. And your crew has protected us over the years, and we're very proud of them. And we consider them our family, and that's the truth. And so, back at you, and welcome to Temecula. We hope we see you often.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Well, that's it for presentations. Now is the time for public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments on non-agendized items.
Wow, that's two meetings in a row, which is unusual. So we'll move to city council reports, if my colleagues would get in the queue.
I don't even know how to get in the queue anymore.
I don't see anybody in the queue.
I am.
Are you in the queue?
I did.
Okay, go for it. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, so this last Thursday, I was on a ride-along for a drug bust, basically. We shut down three illegal dispensaries here in Temecula. And what I want people to understand is there are no legal dispensaries in Temecula. And so, the city council spent a lot of time discussing this. And if anybody is confused why we did what we did, look up on YouTube, May 9th, 2017, and that'll give you the entire discussion that went down that day. And so, please understand that these illegal dispensaries, we have no control over what they're selling. And so, when you're buying a product from them, you know, whether it be CBD oil or pot, whatever it is, it has not been tested. It has not went through any kind of regulatory process. So, please be careful when you're out there. Try to only buy from legal dispensaries. We do allow deliveries in Temecula for medical marijuana only, or cannabis only. So, medical cannabis. So, please, just be careful out there, you know? And these places do get robbed often, totally unreported, by the way, too, because they don't want cops showing up to bust them again. So, be careful out there. That's one thing. The rod run, Friday night was awesome. I mean, I did the cruise night. We had a great time. The weather was absolutely perfect. Saturday, of course, was not. So, we have internally decided we're gonna move the rod run out of March, and it looks like it's gonna be in May sometime, maybe early May. So, for all those who were disappointed this year and last year, we are going to try to find better weather for the rod run. Also, I was watching American Idol the other night, and we have a Temecula resident named Cory Young, who's on American Idol. So, watch American Idol and see how Cory does. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Schwank?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief little recap. This past week, I finished up a meeting with all the department heads with the city staff side. And really, no surprise to me, we gotta dig down into everything that the city does, but just what an amazing team we have put together. So, it was a pleasure to meet with all the department heads, with Aaron and his staff, and just really dig down into what we do here. And like I said, not news to me too much, but for the community, you got an amazing city staff working for you. So, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I get to do something that is rare, but I will explain to you first that there's an organization in the state of California, and it's called the League of California Cities. And the cities in California belong to the League. And the League advocates for cities. They are very active in Sacramento, supporting local control for cities and anything that's going to impact local control for cities. And we've been fairly active in the Riverside County chapter. And apparently, other people have been active in the Riverside County chapter, too. I have a plaque that I am going to present to our city attorney, and it is from the League of California Cities. And it says, "To Richards, Watson, and Gerson, in appreciation of your support of the League of California Cities Riverside County 2017-18." And I can tell you without sponsors and supporters like this that the League really couldn't function as efficiently as it does. So, it takes people like Peter and his law firm to keep us going and help us continue to fight against the state of California and for local control. So, Peter, I'll give this to you.
So, we'll just take a minute to embarrass Peter just a little bit. I think Peter has served the city longer than any council member. Peter, how long have you been the city attorney for the city of Temecula?
Since 1994.
Since 1994. So, he knows where all the bones are buried. Isn't that right, Peter?
No comment.
No, most of them have moved on, so...
Okay, got it. Got it. Okey-dokey. That leaves me with the last comment. I have a slide I'd like to show, if you can go ahead and put it up. Let's see. The circus is coming to town. And I'd like to invite everybody to go to the circus. Now, you might be wondering, what the heck is the mayor doing promoting Circus Vargas? Let me tell you. For the past five years, maybe six, every time they come to Temecula on opening night, they give away hundreds of tickets to the special needs community. And why is that important? Many of the families with special needs children can't really afford to take their family of two, three, mom and dad to the circus. It's an expensive evening. Well, they say, "We want you to come out and see the circus, so we're gonna give you some tickets." They do this every year. And they put on a stunning show. So if you decide to come out on opening night on March 22nd, you're gonna see a lot of happy faces and a lot of kiddos that could never really go to the circus. But if you don't make it out that night, I really want to encourage you not only to see the show, but they come to town and they give. So, go give back. Go see the show. It's worth the price of admission, and it keeps them coming back year after year. And they're a class organization. So, they open opening night, Friday, March 22nd, and looks like they're going to... the theme is a journey back to the golden era of the circus. And they do really have some incredible acts. So, that's my comments for the evening. Thank you. Before I move on to the consent calendar, I usually do this in the beginning of the meeting, but I forgot. A lot of young people are here as a purpose for their government class. So where are my plumas? Where are my plumas tonight? Hands up.
Oh, wow.
Lots of plumas tonight. Okay. Where are the golden bears? All right, we got golden bears in the house. Wolfpack, you out there?
Ooh.
Ah, okay. Looks like, I don't know, I think the plumas won it tonight. Good to have all you young people here. Anybody, you know, believe it or not, oftentimes, we have government classes from Murrieta. Anybody here? Any government students from Murrieta? Okay, none tonight. We're gonna go ahead and move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. And because they're routine, they will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion by the city council of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one is waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of February 26, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. Those are the checks that the city writes. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of January 31st, 2019. Everybody just look up and smile at the city treasurer. She never gets any love. Nobody reads the reports, but I read the reports. I take that back, okay? But give her the love. City treasurer report, January 31st, 2019. Number five, accept and appropriate SHSP grant funds and authorize the purchase of the Stop the Bleed program kits from LifeAssist with related funds. Six, approve agreements... Hold on a second. Did I skip something?
No, you did.
No, I did not. Six, approve agreements with Gosh Ford for Temecula... Gosh Ford of Temecula for the purchase of two 2019 Ford Transit Connect cargo vans. One is a 2019 Ford Ranger XL Super Cab truck, and one is a 2019 Ford Transit Connect XL cargo van, complete with air conditioning, vinyl top. I sound like Cal Worthington here, but you get the idea, okay? Seven...
And they're saying, "Who's Cal Worthington?"
They don't know. YouTube it, guys. You'll understand, okay? Seven, approved purchase and installation agreement with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for playground equipment and enhanced and safety surfacing, Riverton Park, Public Works 18-17. Eight, approve agreement for consultant services with CNS Engineers, Inc. for Murrieta Creek Bridge at Overland Drive. We're actually going to cross the creek at Overland Drive. It's gonna help reduce traffic in that area. Number nine, approve agreement for consultant services with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for the Butterfield Stage Road Phase III, Public Works 15-11. For the record, I'll be abstaining from that item, and the city attorney will explain that later. Number 10, authorize city manager to approve agreements for excavation monitoring for Butterfield Stage Road Phase III, PW. That's Public Works 15-11. I'll be abstaining from that. And item 11, approve amendment number one to cooperative agreement with County of Riverside for Rancho California Road Widening as part of the Butterfield Stage Road Phase III. We're widening Butterfield Stage Road, ladies and gentlemen, at Rancho California Road. And I'll be abstaining from that as well. 12, approve First Amendment to Agreement with Pacific Striping, Inc. for On-Call Striping for Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. 13, adopt a resolution finding that an emergency continues to exist within the meaning of Public Contract Code Section 22050. The rain did a lot of damage. 14, vacate restricted areas along a portion of Verde's Lane at Parcel 2 of Parcel Map 29470. And that looks like... that's it for the consent calendar. Peter, could you explain my abstentions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Councilman... or Mayor Nigard will be abstaining on items 9, 10, and 11 that all relate to the construction of Butterfield Stage Road down to Rancho California Road. And the reason for that is business dealings he has with an adjacent property owner and with a contractor on the project. And he does not need to leave the council chamber because unless this is pulled from the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So I'll accept the motion.
Move approval, considering the abstentions.
Thank you. That was Councilmember Edwards on the motion. Mayor Pro Tem, Stuart on the second. Please cast your vote. And hold on a second here. There we go. And that motion passes 4-0. One council member absent and my noted abstentions. The city council sits as various different entities. Right now, we're going to briefly adjourn the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Service District meeting and President James Stewart.
All right, I'll call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Please note, Madam Clerk, that we are all present except for Mr. Ron. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
Okay. So, we'll skip right to the consent calendar. Item number 15, approve the action minutes of February 26, 2019. Item number 16, approve and amend the... well, do we do the approval of the amendments first?
You can do all three of them at one time.
Okay, perfect. Approve amended and restated cooperation agreement with Temecula Valley Museum, Inc. for operations of the Wedding Chapel Courtyard and Concessions Facility. Item number 17, adopt resolution determining that the emergency repairs authorized by Resolution 2019-11 pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 22050 have been completed, and there is no longer a need for emergency authorization. Do I have a motion?
Move consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Okay, that looks like it's 4-0. Director's report. Do we have any director's report?
Yes, Mr. President, just briefly. At the last meeting, there were several reports on the Read Across America Day and the wonderful time we had. And I'm just making good on a commitment that I gave. So I'm giving a shout-out to an incredible teacher, Ms. Johnson, and her TES fourth-grade class of future leaders. I really appreciate the wonderful and creative thank-you cards that you also made. So thanks again. Shout-out, I made good. There you go. That concludes my report.
A general manager's report?
Nothing further than that, Mr. President.
All right, any director's reports?
Nope.
None seen?
Move adjournment.
Second.
All right, we will adjourn until March 26, 2019.
All right, at this time, I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. I'm gonna move to the business section of our agenda. Item 18, receive and file Regional Cancer Task Force update at the request of your subcommittee members, yours truly, Mayor Nigard and Councilmember Edwards. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you do.
Oh, there you are.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Nigard and Councilmember Edwards, along with our city council and management. I'm Betsy Lowry, City Manager, Senior City Management Analyst for the City Managers Office.
And I'm Antonio Chavez, WR COG Fellow.
The Southwest Riverside County Cancer Services Task Force originally formed in November of 2016. You'll recall Mayor Nigard had a very heartbreaking story. His assistant needed to take her young daughter out of the region daily at times for cancer treatment, placing an additional burden on a family already faced with such a devastating disease. Ultimately, this girl became an angel and a motivation for this task force.
Understanding that our valley is growing tremendously, residents like Mayor Nigard's little angel friend and others faced with the challenging disease of cancer may also be faced with needing to drive several hours round trip to Orange County, San Diego, or LA to receive cancer treatment. So Mayor Nigard, together with Councilmember Marian Edwards, collaborated with our region in an effort to determine how might elected leaders, together with change-makers in the cancer care and medical community, ease one burden of those suffering from cancer by ensuring they don't have to travel so far.
So the fundamental need of the task force was to understand the accessibility of the cancer care-related services and treatment options in Riverside County, Southwest Riverside County. Do we need more to keep our growing up with our growing population? Are patients traveling out of the area? Why are they traveling out of the area? Where are they going? Why... all of these questions, the task force only had anecdotal knowledge and some personal experience, but no real facts, and especially no facts in Southwest Riverside County.
So here's what the task force accomplished over the course of nine meetings, hearing from testimonials from cancer patients and caregivers in the region, and many sub-meetings as well. The first was funding. The task force secured a collaborative grant among all of the cities and the county through WR COG. With these funds, the task force hired an independent research organization to assess the cancer in our region and the availability of services and resources across the continuum of cancer care, which included prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and post-treatment.
As a result, we had two comprehensive studies very specific to Southwest Riverside County. What do we know about cancer in our region and the Southwest Riverside County Cancer Care Needs Assessment? This was an incredible undertaking, a lot of surveying and data collection. They are online and accessible to our medical community.
Here's what the reports look like. There are also infographics that quickly call out information such as prevalence, incidence, surgery, mortality, and more within our specific region. And stats about patients, including how far their cancer treatment is from home and reasons for the distant treatment. Since government is not in the healthcare field, these studies are, again, for our medical community to use as a development tool for expanding their practices. Many from our region jumped in immediately, filling some of the needs.
For example, we learned that we have a shortage of primary family doctors. They are the first line in the continuum of cancer care and prevention and diagnosis. Knowing that about 34% of physicians who are in a residency program end up staying and working in the region where they complete their residency, our very own award-winning, grade-A community hospital, Temecula Valley Hospital, initiated a residency program to include family medicine. It became accredited. It is credited now to begin in 2019, and they anticipate expanding into internal medicine program in the near future.
Menifee Valley Medical Center, through its partner hospital, Hemet Valley Medical Center, is also expanding its residency program to include family medicine as well. This is in addition to their existing residency program for diagnostic radiology, internal medicine, and transitional year program.
Loma Linda University Center submitted for and earned national accreditation by the Commission of Cancer of American College of Surgeons for its cancer program last year. That's huge. The HARC studies do point to say that the fact that patients do leave the area expressed importance of cancer care accreditation. We have that now.
City of Hope jumped on board. As of mid-2018, we have City of Hope radiation oncology sites in Wildamar and Temecula. We had a stakeholder on our task force, and the person is now Regional Vice President of Operations for City of Hope. The City of Hope name alone is synonymous with quality accredited cancer care. We heard that City of Hope is also expanding, or may have now already opened hematology and oncology services into Murrieta.
24% of cancer patients in our region surveyed that financial hardship is one of the difficulties of their cancer. Michelle's Place, our phenomenal, local proactive, dedicated-to-cancer resources nonprofit, stepped up and expanded their program to now fund low-income patients. They also are expanding to provide more than just breast cancer, but to include all cancers. They also moved into a bigger building. Our 2019 Citizen of the Year, Kim Garrish, is here. And of course, she is here because she never missed a single cancer task force meeting. She was the task force go-to person this entire process. Kim, are you here? I know she's here. I saw her come in. Yeah.
You can stand now or later, Kim? It's up to you. Okay, all right.
So the HARC studies determined 34% of patients need help finding cancer resources in our region. So the task force collaborated with Reader Media to not only produce the region's cancer resource guide, but a full magazine that we have placed at each of your chairs and is out in the hall for anyone interested. Reader Media stepped right up to work with the task force. This was not an easy undertaking. They needed advertising. They needed informational content from each of the task force members and the medical community. And so, a tremendous effort by Reader Media. And it is... it provides not only a list of our resources, but a lot of informational articles. This guide is online and in hard copy for distribution to all medical offices throughout the region.
So we're almost done. During this process, our task force member, Salome, who is an epidemiologist for Riverside County Public Health, submitted an abstract that was selected by the American Public Health Association. She presented at their 2018 Annual Expo, "The Work of This Regional Task Force as an Innovative Approach to Assessing and Addressing a Need for Services and Treatment Options." Thank you, Salome, for representing us.
And finally, the findings of the task force studies were that we need to market the region across the country or the world, targeting future physicians and medical centers to consider relocating here. So the task force created its first-ever Southwest Riverside County regional attraction video specifically produced to market the uniqueness of each of our cities and our ever-expanding high-quality healthcare community. It is being played now on social media and sent through our Riverside County Medical Association to target the medical community. I'd like to thank here Tony Chavez. He was our WR COG fellow who helped us get to the finish line. I'd also like to recognize Erica Russo, who was my staff counterpart facilitating efforts of this task force in 2017. I'll turn it over to Mayor Nigard, Councilmember Marian Edwards, who have been...
Betsy, do we have the video?
We do. We have the video. If you'd like to play it, that is your call.
Please do.
Yes. Jonathan.
Please do. I think it's worthwhile.
Oh, yeah. It's absolutely...
The southwest region of Riverside County welcomes new physicians and medical office professionals to work, live, and play in...
Temecula.
Murrieta.
Lake Elsinore.
Wildamar.
Menifee.
Our beautiful Southern Californian community features a world-class wine country, picturesque snow-capped mountains, and fresh ocean breezes that fill our valley every afternoon.
Temecula, one of the largest cities in the region, is home to a thriving tourism industry that includes wine country and a charming old-town shopping district. Pachanga, California... that includes wine country and a charming old-town shopping district, Pachanga, California's largest resort and casino, championship golf courses, as well as a regional shopping lifestyle center, the promenade in Temecula. There are so many opportunities for the medical profession here in Temecula. It's becoming more metropolitan, but keeping its rural, family-friendly feel. From the rolling hills of Santiago Estates to the equestrian neighborhood of Meadowview, we are ranked the top school district in the county. They're coming here because of the quality of life. And when I came here, from the moment I came, I knew this was going to be the place I was going to raise my family.
Murrieta is well-known for its strong sense of community. Thanks to our police and fire departments, we are ranked as one of the safest cities in the nation. With 23,000 kids in our school district and four separate large senior facilities, we have an incredible need for everything from primary care physicians to specialists. There will be no lack of opportunities for doctors to set up practice in Murrieta and be quite successful. Tons of centrally-located new housing opportunities mean you are only a short drive from Loma Linda, Kaiser, and Rancho Springs medical facilities. Not to mention Rady Children's, which recently celebrated the grand opening of a new 60,000-square-foot medical plaza right here in Murrieta. How awesome is that?
Southwest Riverside County has grown exponentially, and so has its need for healthcare. In the past decade, new cities have formed in our valley, including Menifee and Wildamar, and our regional population is now over half a million. New hospitals and hospital expansions in all our cities have created an exciting, high-quality medical hub for all of Southern California.
Lake Elsinore is welcoming thousands of new residents, businesses, and visitors each year. Centrally located along Interstate 15, it is home to Southern California's largest natural freshwater lake. Its legacy is built on a unique history filled with extreme activities and action sports.
From a medical perspective, I would say that Lake Elsinore being a growing community represents a growing need for services in the medical industry. There's a great opportunity in that respect. Most residents in our area have to travel outside of the city to get emergency services or maybe specialty services, so the opportunity is phenomenal and it's growing.
Wildamar was established in 1886 and incorporated in 2008. We take pride in being a safe and active community, and with quick access to the 15 and 215 freeways, we are close to everywhere you need to be. A couple of years ago, I went through cancer here. One of my biggest concerns when I started looking for doctors and stuff, I was like, where am I going to go, you know? Where can I get the best help? I tell you what, I found it right here in my own little town. If I wasn't able to have that surgery here and get it taken care of right away and not that prolonged time, it could have made my life different. I was lucky. We have good doctors, but we need more good doctors.
Menifee is a vibrant new community, creating a buzz as the fastest-growing city in the region. We have new, clean shopping, wonderful schools, we have a college. It seems like almost every month, there's a new business opening up, but yet it's still rural. It's a place where you just want to call home. So we have fun, we live, it's safe, we love it, and we just welcome you to come. We need you.
This is an amazing community. I have been extremely fortunate to have been able to expand our practice here. It's because this is a gem of a place, and I think any physician who comes out here would have an amazing place to raise your family, great partners to collaborate, wonderful patients to take care of who are extremely grateful for the care they receive.
So why aren't you here? I mean, in case you can't tell by now, Southwest Riverside County has everything you could ever want. And while each of these cities offers something unique, combined, they provide the perfect conditions for happiness, growth, and success. I've lived here for over 15 years, and it was the best decision I have ever made, both professionally and personally. So come see for yourself. We would like to invite you to pay us a visit and also become part of Southern California's fastest-growing medical community.
Thank you, Betsy. Hold on right, real quick. Madam Clerk, is anybody speaking on this issue? Sounds good. Kim, do you mind coming up real quick? As Betsy indicated, you know, Kim, what is your official title? CEO, manager of Michelle's Place?
Executive Director.
Executive Director. And you've been in the valley dealing with breast cancer for how long now?
Michelle's Place has been providing breast cancer patients for 17 years. I've been doing it for 15.
And you've, Michelle's Place recently has expanded their mission. Could you tell us about that?
Our vision to say that no one should face cancer alone, so we expanded to all cancers recently. We just did a report today, too. Since November, we've seen 15 different types of cancers just since November, since we expanded that. So the need is there, and we knew that. The fear is just, can we handle it?
I think you, I think you will. You've handled everything else in the past.
Yeah.
I'll go to my colleagues. Any comments or questions? Yes, Zach?
So, so kudos to Subcommittee for doing this. Thank you, Mayor Nigar, Councilmember Edwards. Just to bring this to the community, right? This is something that's extremely important. On a personal note, you know, our families lived for quite a while, and there were times where they had to travel out of, you know, they'd have to go to San Diego, just flat out, you have to go to San Diego. Recently, my mother-in-law is experiencing some cancer, and she had, she can stay here now, right? Like, she's reached out to Michelle's Place. So that was like, just to know that there's this community behind it, to support it, to see this happen. You know, it just means a lot to me, but I know it means it's a huge amount to our community, so, thank you. Thanks for being there.
Of course.
Yeah, I'd just like to take a minute to thank all the organizations and professionals that came together, and cities that came together to form the task force. We knew that we had a shortage of doctors, but we didn't know where, you know, which cities or what type of doctors. And so all the research that the Cancer Task Force did really helped us to focus in on what we need. And then we addressed that by developing the video, by developing the Cancer Resource Guide, the magazine, so thank you to Reader Media for doing that. And Michelle's Place has been a fixture in town, helping breast cancer survivors and people going through breast cancer, and that's men and women, not just women. But to expand now to address all cancers is tremendous, so, you know, and they always need support, and they need donations. They've expanded, they've moved into a new building, so you never know when you're going to need that help, so we need to reach out to Michelle's Place and support them. The other thing that's remarkable is that we did not have a residency program for physicians. We have UC Riverside Medical School, but they, there was no hospital down here for them to serve their residency. So now, thank you to Temecula Valley Hospital for starting that residency. And I can tell you that I had contact this week from the lady who is in charge of those residents, and the first-year residents are coming onboard, and they're looking for community-based operations and volunteer services for them. So I said, yeah, the city would probably love to have them volunteer, maybe to travel with our CityNet or our homeless outreach team and provide on-the-spot services for the homeless population. So the fact that everybody came together and we have these huge measurable tools, and now we'll be able to see the measurable results when we have new physicians starting to come to the community. One of the doctors, one of our local physicians, has been tasked with bringing 177 residents to town, or new doctors to town, next year. Or this, I guess this year. So it's a huge undertaking, but he's up to the task, and we'll see what happens. But thank you, Michelle's Place, and everybody else who became part of the task force and really dug in and found what the issues were and helped us solve some of those problems on behalf of our residents, and Zach's mother-in-law.
And again, thank you to our colleagues in the other cities. Everybody in that video representing a city was a public official, whether it was a mayor or council member. It was quite the collaboration. Just a couple of other things. Nothing ever gets done by any one person, and so, Betsy, I have to thank you tremendously for the work that you did. And Antonio, I mean, based on what I hear, like, you just walk on water, okay? Everywhere I go. Now, I understand, Antonio, you've been, you've been with us as a WRCOG fellow, correct? And you're moving on pretty soon. Where are you going?
City of Menifee.
And what are you going to do there?
I'm going to be Office Specialist with their Community Development Department.
Beautiful. I presume Betsy and Mr. City Manager Antonio got all the references he needed from our city?
He hopefully got them. He got the job on his own, but we're here for him in the future and can vouch for his exceptional work in managing this project with Betsy. He did a great job.
An excellent job, one that's going to have lasting ramifications. So you left us with something that's going to be around a long time, so well done, young man. Thank you. Any other questions by my colleague?
No.
If not, this is a receive and file, so we have received it. We will file it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, item number 19. Receive and file Short-Term Rental Ordinance Update and Provide General Direction Regarding Ordinance Framework at the Request of Subcommittee Members Mayor Pro Tim Stewart and Councilmember Ron. I understand City Manager Aaron Adams is going to abstain. You want to say it, go ahead, Peter.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll address it. City Manager Aaron Adams will not be participating and hasn't in this effort because his wife works for the visit to Temecula Valley.
Thank you very much. Also, I just want to emphasize to the community, we're not adopting an ordinance tonight, but we're putting together the framework for an ordinance. And who's got a staff report for me?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick comments to set this up before I turn it over to Mr. Rabidu, who's our program manager on this effort. And staff is here tonight returning to council with, you stole the words right out of my mouth, a regulatory framework regarding short-term rentals. You'll recall back in November, council received a presentation from staff on five community meetings, as well as a public survey that was taken on the issue of short-term rentals. As you recall, the public meeting in November, also, you took a public testimony, heard public testimony, and then after considering that feedback, you gave staff very clear direction on three policy framework areas, the first being neighborhood protection, which Brandon will get into in detail, as well as short-term rental operator accountability, and finally, administration of a short-term rental program. So staff is prepared to present a policy framework on those specific items, and those, and the policy framework is based specifically on the council's direction that was received that night. And again, just to reiterate, Mr. Mayor, you already said it, but tonight, what's being presented is just a policy framework. It's not an ordinance. It's not even a draft ordinance at this point, so we're still in discussion phase. And any ordinance would need to come back at a future hearing, at a future meeting date for the council to consider at that time. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Brandon Rabidu, who's a planner with the city, and he's going to present the framework.
Brandon, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Nigar, City Council. Tonight, I'm here to present the proposed short-term rental framework for hosted rentals. A little bit of background and timeline. In 2017, staff noticed an increase in code enforcement complaints related to short-term rentals. In the summer of 2018, as we discussed a moment ago, we had five community outreach meetings that were held in each district of the city. In addition to that, we held online and in-person surveys. In November 2018, the city council discussed the short-term rental framework, or short-term rental issue, and provided some initial direction to staff. Staff has been working with a consultant since November 2018, and we are presenting that framework this evening. We also met with the planning commission and city council subcommittees on the proposed framework and gathered feedback from them. And tonight is the opportunity for the city council to discuss that framework in more detail. We did want to go over some of the definitions for the general public to understand what we're talking about tonight. A short-term rental is a rental that operates less than 30 days. Short-term rental platforms are online marketplaces such as Airbnb, VRBO, or HomeAway that allow someone to list their short-term rental. A non-hosted short-term rental is one that operates without any requirement for a host, also known as a whole-house rental. A hosted short-term rental is one that has a host, and it's also known as owner-home-sharing. We've had a lot of questions from the community about where would these proposed frameworks apply. On the map in front of you, you'll see the white, and that is the city of Temecula's jurisdiction and the city limits. The areas in the yellow are either other cities or the County of Riverside unincorporated areas. This framework would not apply to areas that include Wine Country, Morgan Hill, or Duluth. Those areas fall under the County of Riverside's jurisdiction. So what is the County of Riverside's regulations? Well, Riverside County does allow for non-hosted short-term rentals, but there is a significantly different development pattern. On the right-hand side of the screen, on the right-hand side of the red line, you'll see the County of Riverside and Wine Country, and on the left, you'll see the city of Temecula. Our residents generally live in smaller, more urbanized areas where their next-door neighbor is a lot closer to them. So what are the current regulations for short-term rentals? Well, existing short-term rentals are not permitted. They have no business license, they have no permit, and no TOT is currently being paid. There is regulations for bed and breakfast in our current municipal code that allow for a conditionally used, allow for a conditionally permitted bed and breakfast. The requirements for those regulations include a 60,000-square-foot or larger lot, the use is incidental to residential use, there's no receptions, private parties, or anything similar to that, and the owner, lessy, shall reside in the primary residence and operate the business. They also are required to have a public hearing, which includes neighborhood neighborhoodification. So what is the current status of unpermitted short-term rentals in the city of Temecula? Well, within the city limits, we have 223 unpermitted short-term rentals currently. This number does fluctuate based on seasonality. In the summer months, we obviously see these numbers increase. There's been approximately a 13% increase in unpermitted short-term rentals over the course of the last year. The current makeup of unpermitted short-term rentals in the city of Temecula is as follows. Approximately 65% of the units are non-hosted short-term rentals, which is about, like I said, 145 units, and about 35% of the units are hosted short-term rentals, which equates to about 78 units. What days are these short-term rentals being utilized? Well, Friday and Saturday compose almost 50% of the short-term rental rentals. How many nights a year are these operated? Well, 41% of these short-term rentals are operated 120 nights or more per year, and about 59% are operated under 120 nights per year. So why are we here? Well, we've mentioned a few times, existing short-term rentals are not permitted. In-person survey results and community feedback indicated that there's issues related to the following topics: noise, events and parties, parking, trash, safety, maintaining homes as a residential use, the quality of our neighborhoods, and quality of life concerns. Non-hosted short-term rentals are essentially operating as an unstaffed commercial hotel in residential neighborhoods. After community outreach, unpermitted short-term rentals are still operating, and some unpermitted short-term rentals are still listing amenities that were major concerns raised by the community. Here's an example listing, a five-bedroom, three-bath, that sleeps 20-plus people. The same listing states that it's an event-party facility. We allow events such as rehearsal dinners, family reunions, bachelorette parties, and so on for up to 50 guests. The listing also states this home's garage has been transformed into a 600-square-foot game room with pool table and dartboard. It also states you may park your car easily in the street outside the property. Again, these are some of the concerns we heard at those community meetings. On the screen in front of you, you'll see the call log for one short-term rental and all the police calls associated with that rental. This is a worst-case example, and you'll notice that noise is a prominent issue. We do want to point out some of the times, 2:00 a.m., midnight, 1:00 a.m., that these issues are occurring, that definitely impacts the neighborhood in a negative way. There are some other considerations as well. The current governor has made it a priority to address housing in the state of California. And with approximately 145 units that are non-hosted short-term rentals, those non-hosted short-term rentals are reducing the available housing stock to the community. Switching over to a community outreach and survey portion of the presentation, we had a lot of overwhelming feedback that supported regulation. You'll see that 44% of the respondents in that survey said, that rent- You'll see that forty-four percent of the respondents in that survey said that rentals should be prohibited. Forty-three percent said there should be short-term rentals, but with regulations. So eighty-seven percent of the community said, hey, we should have some form of regulations because prohibition is a form of regulation as well. Three themes emerged from the community outreach and city council meeting. Those include a neighborhood protection component, which included a hosted short-term rental requirement, short-term rental operator accountability, and a fair permit process and consistent enforcement process. In terms of community goals, hosting was one of the major discussion points. At the city council's direction and the community's feedback, the proposed framework would require hosted short-term rentals where the owner must be on site from nine PM to five AM. There would also be a primary resident requirement where no second homes could be utilized as a short-term rental. Additionally, to address some of the noise complaints, there'd be enhanced quiet hours. In particular, from Sunday to Thursday, they'd be from nine PM to seven AM. We heard a lot of feedback from the community that they commute to San Diego or Orange County or Los Angeles at four or five in the morning. They wanna be able to go to bed a little bit earlier than ten o'clock. We also heard that, again, it's making a major impact in their lives. On Friday and Saturday, the hours would be ten PM to eight AM. In terms of parking, there'd be a requirement that the guests would have to park in the garage or the driveway, and the guests may not be able to use any street parking. In terms of occupancy, there would be a two-guest-per-bedroom occupancy requirement with one bedroom being maintained for the primary resident. In terms of kitchens, dining rooms, and garages, those would not be allowed to be counted towards the total occupancy. In terms of life safety, we reached out to the fire department and building and safety departments, and they recommended that there be cell verification of smoke detectors and carbon monoxide alarms, as well as a requirement for readily accessible fire extinguisher. In terms of duration, we heard from the community that these homes should be used as a residence primarily. And so there, under the proposed framework, there'd be a hundred and twenty-day-per-year maximum. In terms, in order to address party houses, we heard that there should be a requirement for two-night stay minimum. Again, someone couldn't just rent the house for the day, have a party, and then leave. In terms of signage, the proposed framework would require signage to be under the existing residential standards. In terms of other requirements, our HOA community came out and said they wanna be involved in this process as well, and they want to approve these short-term rentals. Short-term rentals cannot be in RVs, garages, tents, or other similar facilities, and a short-term rental operator could not list each room individually. In terms of operator accountability, we heard from a lot of the community that they would like to see a three-strikes program. That included a first strike would be a warning and educational opportunity for permitted short-term rentals. A second strike would include a fifteen-day suspension, and a third strike would be a one-year revocation. We're also examining whether a permanent revocation could be put in place for repeat offenders. In terms of illegal short-term rentals, we're looking at a first offense warning slash educational opportunity, and any subsequent offenses would be one thousand dollars per occurrence. In terms of host responsibility, during the daytime, there would be a thirty-minute response time requirement from five AM to nine PM. And again, in the evening, the owner must be on site from nine PM to five AM. In terms of platform responsibility, we are examining the ability to find hosting platforms up to one thousand dollars per illegal listing. We're also looking at permits. We heard that we wanna hold people accountable for any type of permit, so the permit would not be transferable. And the permit must be visible to the public, whether it's posted on a front door or a gate if a front door is not accessible. It would be a city-standard permit that would include the owner's name, phone number, and short-term rental hotline. In terms of the permit process, the goal is to have an online permit process. We wanna make sure that anyone that's coming here for the permit and going through the correct motions, they are able to do this quickly and efficiently. Additionally, in order to ensure that they understand the requirements of the ordinance, there'd be required affidavit with the ordinance attached. They'd also be required to have a business license, like any other business in the city, and the business license runs about thirty-nine dollars. The permit would be valid for one year, and the permit would be renewed on February first of each year. Again, we wanna create an efficient process so they're not having to come to the city multiple times. It would renew with the business license. In terms of permit fees, we wanna have reasonable fees that are encouraging compliance. The California averages approximately four hundred dollars. In order to understand what we actually should be charging, there would be a fiscal impact analysis and fee study associated with this project. In terms of transit occupancy tax, the hosted short-term rentals would be required to pay TOT. And there would be a third-party compliance vendor. This is something the city's been studying. This allows the staff to outsource some of the monitoring of short-term rentals, and it could also increase customer service slash enforcement by providing the following: a twenty-four-hour hotline. It could address some issues before code or police would need to be involved. It also assists with data collection, fact-finding, and compliance documentation. In terms of enforcement, our third-party compliance vendor would work with our code enforcement team and police team to address any issues as they arose. We talked a lot about regulations in the proposed framework, but we also wanna talk about some of the new opportunities. We did hear from the community that they wanted some new opportunities. Again, today, currently, short-term rentals are unpermitted. The proposed framework would allow hosted short-term rentals to operate, a homeowner to generate supplemental income, a homeowner to utilize excess capacity, their extra bedrooms, a homeowner to provide alternative lodging accommodations to those with different lodging preferences, and it would allow the homeowner to provide flexibility to determine when they would rent their short-term rental up to a hundred and twenty days per year. And finally, we're not proposing any changes to the bed and breakfasts regulations that would allow someone with a lot of sixty thousand square feet or larger, in addition to all the other requirements they have to meet, as we discussed earlier. In terms of fiscal analysis, staff was directed to analyze the cost of a short-term rental program by the city council. And staff is proposing to complete the fiscal analysis under the proposed hosted short-term rental ordinance framework. That third-party compliance vendor we discussed a little bit. Staff is looking for direction to initiate the request proposal for a third-party compliance vendor. This will assist us with addressing existing unpermitted operations, developing our permit process, and understanding the full cost of a hosted short-term rental program. With that, staff is looking for city council feedback on the proposed hosted short-term ordinance framework, direction to move forward with the third-party vendor, RFP, moving forward with the fiscal impact analysis to determine appropriate fees. We do anticipate returning to the city council in fall 2019, as we do have to do that fiscal impact analysis, and that does take about ninety to a hundred and twenty days. We also need to complete CQ analysis, which will take approximately ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And finally, we're recommending that we evaluate the proposed future short-term rental program after one year. With that, staff is available to answer any questions. We do have our consultant from MIG to answer questions as well.
Thank you very much. A very thorough staff report. Appreciate it. At this time, no need to clap right now. We got a lot of work to do, and there'll be plenty of time to clap, which I'll explain later. Right now, it's a time for questions, questions only of staff. Are there any questions?
I do.
Marion Edwards.
So I guess this is gonna be for Peter. Can we actually prohibit public parking on public streets?
That's one of the issues that we're looking at. In this case, it's related to the permit and how that would work, and then what types of permit parking would be permitted on the street.
Okay, and then the next question is, how can we hold the listing agency accountable for the actions of somebody who used the agency?
Well, you're right. There would need to be some nexus between what they're doing and the illegal activity, and it would relate to the advertisement that is on their site or the way in which they market it. There is a lot of legal support for that, but there's also a couple of cases pending that might change that. So that particular issue is up in the air.
And then I asked Aaron this question to clarify, and then in this report, I saw it again. We say no individual renting, no renting of individual rooms, but then at the end of the report, it said if you have extra bedrooms, it gives you a chance to take advantage of extra capacity in your home. So who can address the difference between renting individual rooms and renting the whole? Obviously, I understand renting the whole house with the owner present, but why the no individual rooms?
Councilmember Edwards, I'd be happy to answer that question. The way it is, is that most listings for short-term rentals are for, you know, an entire home or the existing other bedrooms in a home. Some operators are renting each individual room with a separate reservation. That comes, that becomes an issue because some places are doing this in apartment complexes, and they're renting out each individual room and turning apartment complexes into hotels. That's the concern with that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, just have a couple of quick questions. Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, thanks for the staff report. Fantastic, as always. Do we know how many whole-house SDRs we have within the city?
There are currently one hundred and forty-five whole-house.
One forty-five. And then, I know there's a hundred and twenty-day-year maximum that you could rent out your home. What is, how are we going to define a primary residence? Is it the balance of that number, or is it a different number?
We're still working on those definitions. Again, we're kind of at that framework to decide when where we go. But we'll definitely work through those regulations to ensure that it's tight.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, no more questions? All right, so Madam City Clerk, I see we have approximately twenty-seven speakers?
Yes, twenty-six, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty-six, okay. So every one of you twenty-six who wishes to speak gets five minutes. If everybody speaks for five minutes, we're going to be here a long time. And in particular, those of you who put in your speaker slips last are gonna be here till, you know, a good, probably, at least nine, maybe nine-thirty. So let's do this. You guys can take your whole five minutes, no problem. But if somebody's already said something that you're going to say, maybe you could just say, I concur with what that speaker said, or maybe just quickly recite it again, and that would expedite the whole thing. One last thing. Instead of clapping, because that's going to take up some time, if you agree with the speaker, just raise your hand. Okay, let's do that. That way, we can really utilize our time to do some work here today, okay? So with that, Madam City Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
The first speaker is Jessica Abrego, to be followed by Aurelia Abrego.
And so if your name is to be followed by, please get ready. Maybe you can come out here to the aisle so you can get ready. Jessica, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jessica Abrego. I am a single mom, a business owner, and I currently serve in the Air National Guard. I've got thirteen years with the Air Force. And I work at March Air Force Base. I'm also the president of the Short-Term Rental Alliance Group in Temecula. We have currently between forty to fifty members in our group. We hold monthly meetings to discuss the best practices for our local vacation rentals and encourage each other to operate our homes in a respectful and responsible manner. We also meet with local businesses quarterly that support our guests and also support our homes, such as pool cleaners, barbecue cleaners, house cleaners, as well as local wineries and tour companies, and breweries and spirit companies as well, with that bringing additional profits into the city. As an alliance, we've created our bylaws that ensure our members provide excellent customer service to our guests as well as to our neighbors. Tonight, you'll hear from different members of the alliance, both with pros and cons of the proposed regulation. In addition, you'll hear the tried-and-true remedies that we've had on these issues ourselves. There are currently over fifty-five hundred weddings a year in the Temecula Valley, in the Temecula Valley, and over four thousand guests visit Wilson Creek every weekend. The Wine Country is planning for an additional fifty wineries, totaling over a hundred. With a quick Google search I did today, I found about eighteen local hotels. And that's, there's a huge need for additional lodging, and with proper management, we believe that short-term rentals is the answer to this problem. In addition to being a local in town, I think it's important that we ensure we have enough lodging that meets our many travelers to ensure we don't have wine tasters tasting wine and going home and driving to San Diego and LA with a little bit of alcohol in them. If we have places for them to stay where they can catch a quick Uber, we can ensure that at five o'clock, when I'm picking my kids up from school or wherever they're at, that we don't have drunk drivers as well. I also encourage the guests to eat and play local. From our favorite coffee shops, local restaurants, and local tour companies, we, I have a website, and it promotes everything local. We don't promote the franchise type of things. We wanna make sure the money stays here in the local community. According to our local, Airbnb put out a poll, and they said that average vacation rentals that stay in vacation rental homes spend two-point-one percent more than someone who stays in alternative options. Not only are we already receiving additional guest-spending revenue, but currently, we're missing out on the proposed twelve percent tax. That's what the county of Riverside does. They do a twelve percent, ten goes to the city, and two goes to the marketing, to here in the city of Temecula. We're missing out on that. Last month, or the last meeting we had, they said there's between four to five hundred vacation rentals. So the new math, I was trying to do it quickly, but I didn't have time. So we're just gonna go with the old numbers that I did. So currently, if we have four to five hundred vacation rentals, we're gonna just say three hundred of them are full-time SDRs. We're gonna say they make about five thousand dollars a month. So that comes out to one and a half million dollars a month, times that by twelve, and then times that by twelve percent, we're looking at two-point-six million, or two-point-one-six million dollars in revenue the city's missing out yearly. That money for the city of Temecula, also with the Temecula Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau. If we post this policy, we're estimating that we're gonna have about thirty homes left. Because inviting people into your home while you're in your home, I'm a single mom with two kids, allowing kids in my, or allowing strangers in my house with my kids there, that's not an option for us. So, and I'm sure that would pose a factor for many others as well. So if we only said we only had thirty homes, that would make our revenue, and revenue would drop because people are not paying the same for an entire home. So now you're at fifteen hundred dollars a month. That would come out to sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's a difference of over two million and ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars that the city is losing. And the point of this is, if we don't allow it here in Temecula, the business is gonna move to Marietta. And we're paying that money. We already have a Temecula business tourism fee, but we're already putting money into it. We don't wanna encourage our guests to come to Temecula and then have them stay in Marietta or Fallbrook or Waldemar. We love those towns, but this is where we want the money to stay. We're already paying that money for the guests to come. Let's keep our guests here. So I ask that you reconsider the policy. We have a lot of people coming to talk about the different points in it. Please, I ask that you hear them out, listen to what they have to say. And we're proposed, we're offering subcommittee help if you guys have needs. We've dealt with the loud noises. We've combated it. We have different processes in place you'll hear about tonight. And we're here to help. We're in the same team. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
How did you? Thank you. How did you finish? Right on the butt. You are pretty good. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Aurelia Abrego, to be followed by Audrey Abrego.
Hello, Miss Aurelia. Could you pull that microphone down there? There you go.
Dear Mr. President, my name's Aurelia Abrego, and I lived in Temecula for eight and a half years. I go to school in the Temecula Valley, and I am in the fifth grade. I am against the city... Sorry.
You take your time, sweetheart. Find your place. Take your time.
Proposal. P-R-P-O-L-S-O-L-S. That's not English, but current proposals.
Proposals of the S-STRs. Restricting?
Go ahead. You're gonna, don't give up. Rental?
Rental days to one hundred and twenty. These would make it hard for my fam, hard for my family to pay bills. I am not the best at math, but we will cut our income about over two-thirds. My mom will get a new job, and she can not take or drop us off at school or make us breakfast in the morning. I would have to drop out of gymnastics. I would have to drop out of gymnastics, and I will not reach my dream of being the first NFL girl in football. Instead of one-hundred-and-twenty days, we would, we would have strict im-managements will with a third.
Three strikes.
Three strikes. This would allow us to run our business all year, and I will be the first NFL football.
Girl. She likes to play football.
An interesting fact is President Trump has his own S-T-R in Queens, New York. It is his childhood home placed. Please do not shut down S-T-Rs.
Say this, but just look at him, you know what he's doing.
I cannot go to the circus if.
No, just say if, oh, yeah.
I cannot go to the circus if you stop S-T-Rs, but I really want to go.
She saw it, she was like, "I want to go." Thank you.
Aurelia, is that, is that it?
Is that all you've got? Do you have anything else to say?
No.
Okay, come here real quick, sweetheart, because I think, come right up, up front here. Because I think it takes a lot of courage for a fifth grader to come and talk in front of everybody. I have a coupon here for a free snow cone for behind the box, okay? So, you're, have a lot of courage, and it's going to take courage like that to play in the NFL. So, congratulations, okay?
Nice.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Audrey Abrego, to be followed by Michael Knight.
All right.
I'm sorry, Michael Kite.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Audrey Abrego, and I have lived in Temecula since I was six months old. I go to school in the Temecula Valley School District, and I'm in fourth grade. I'm here representing my dad because he can't be here. My dad is a United States Marine and is currently deployed. The current proposal would ban my dad from renting his house out. He left in November and will not return until May. My dad's home will be vacant for six months, leaving possibility of rodents and/or insects in his home. Water leaks and homeless people could be living in the home without us knowing. In addition, my dad wouldn't be receiving additional income. Therefore, he wouldn't be able to pay for college when we get older. Currently, my mom is renting out my dad's house as an S-T-R, using today's technology, such as Wi-Fi fed cameras and NoiseAware, which monitors sound. With the Wi-Fi cameras, we can observe movement in and out of the house. Once we had a man steal a package from our house, our camera caught it, and we reported it to the police. It turns out this man has stolen packages from fifteen other properties, and the man is now in jail because of the ring, because of the ring at the S-T-R. And this is NoiseAware. NoiseAware tracks decibel ratings. This helps you know how loud your guests are. We can stop a problem before it even starts. NoiseAware sends a message two minutes after noise exceeds, uh, preset levels. In most cases, noise complaints are stopped within fifteen minutes, meaning we li, we have happy neighbors. When managed correctly, S-T-Rs benefit our local community. Please hear our suggestions. We want to work together as a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sweetheart. Can you come here, please, too? Thank you. Come, come, come here as well. You are so articulate. What grade are you in? You're in the fourth grade. Very well done. You go with your sister to have a snow cone, okay? Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Michael Kite, to be followed by Robert Schneider.
Mr. Kite, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, sir. Um, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, my name is Michael Kite. I own a very small pool business here in Temecula, California. In fact, it's just, um, my wife owns it and I work it. So, that's how little we are. Um, many of our clients own short-term rental properties here in Temecula. And if, if you guys are proposing an all-or-nothing situation, you're probably looking about at eight-hundred-dollar-a-month hit to my business. Because most of the people that, that own these properties, they're telling me they're just going to have to sell them. They've, they've purchased these properties with, with kind of the understanding that they're going to be able to rent these out and, and utilize them as, as their vacation places to go to. But at the same time, they're, they're relying on, on the income from that property to, to be able to basically make ends meet. So, you know, if you watch the news, we see a whole lot of our, of our personal, of, of our personal liabilities just, just kind of going away. They're being, they're being eaten away, little by little, by city councils, by, by the state, by the county, by, by the federal government. And, you know, I'm not sure that you guys really want to step on the, on the feet of homeowners like that. I just, I just don't see that as, as being part of our, of our city. You know, I'm, I'm really got mixed feelings as far as the S-T-Rs themselves are concerned. My next-door neighbors just moved out, and they left their house to their nineteen- and twenty-year-old kids. I understand noise. I understand noise, believe me. But there are ways to deal with that, that, that don't necessarily require, uh, uh, you just can't do this situation. There are ways to do it. I hope that, that you guys look and you find the ways to, to accomplish that. You know, as I said, I, I agree that, that there are problems with, you know, with noise, with parking, with, with all of the things that have been brought up. There, there are ways to do that. But these S-T-Rs, they also provide income for many ancillary businesses. You know, not only mine as a pool service, but, but the, the landscapers, most, most of the houses that, that I know of that are used as S-T-Rs are, are maintained meticulously because, you know what, you want to get the most money. You know, so, so they are meticulously maintained. But there's also the gardeners, the cleaning services. My son owns his own business here in, in Temecula, and, and he owns a, a mobile detailing business. And he often gets a ton of business from the people that drive in, and then they want the cars to look nice as, as they're going around town. So, you know, he's, he's booked almost every weekend from, from one of the many short-term rentals that are available out here. I really believe that there are many ways to, to mitigate what, what are the negatives involved in short-term rentals, while at the same time allowing people that, that own these houses to, to do the American thing and make the money that, in the way that they see fit to do. And I really honestly ask you guys, you know, don't just, don't, please just don't look at this as an all-or-nothing situation, and, and, you know what, let's find a, a even ground somewhere where everybody can agree that, you know what, this is the right thing. Again, you know, I, I just recently read today that there was other meetings, and you know what? I really try to be involved in, in politics a lot. And, you know, that's my fault for, for not seeing those, those other meetings listed. Otherwise, I would have been there to speak as well. You guys have a great evening, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Robert Schneider, to be followed by Erica Garbey.
Mr. Schneider. How do you do? My name is Robert Schneider, and I'm just going to go ahead, and I did this the last meeting. It's the Temecula Municipal Code Section, blah, blah, blah. Provide, no one shall admit any sound having such intensity or carrying power as to unreasonably interfere with the peace and quiet of other persons or as to a reason, unreasonably annoy, disturb, impair, endanger the comfort, health, or safety of other persons. The city has also restrict noise levels between ten PM and seven AM. Uh, this is the letter that I sent to the Airbnb owner in suing him. And as I said the last time, it worked. And I, honest to goodness, I resent, first off, having to pay eleven-hundred dollars to an attorney for something that I should have a right to. The city of Temecula owes me to at least to have exactly what this says, peace and quiet. I shouldn't have, people should not have to sue people. The police didn't help. The Airbnb didn't help when I, when I complained to them. Um, I felt the meetings, this is my sixth meeting, and hopefully my last, that I was at a meeting, and I saw what the city was doing, and at least putting together. I'm slightly disappointed with the timeframe, Mr. Watson, or where we are with it, because if you have people out here that have real problems, real problems today, I don't have the problem today because I cured it with a lawsuit. But you've got a lot of people out here with problems that need, they need it done now. And I understand you have your protocol, but I'm, I'm just asking if you could just speed it up a little bit for these people that are, it's happening to all the time. I read the framework where not, I, I am not out to, I leave that they deserve to make money. I'm not taking away, I'm making money. But there has to be, there has to be a framework, and I love the word framework. And I agree, actually, with all of these, except the one thing. It's kind of interesting. I don't agree with a two-night-stay minimum. It always bugged me and my wife when we try to go to Santa Barbara, and we have to pay for two nights, but we really only want one. And I, it really will encourage people to look for alternatives on what are we going to do the second night? Well, guess what? We're going to have a party. We're going to invite everybody over. So, I think it's actually a detriment with the, with the two-night min, stay minimum. But, but really, I, I, there's nothing in here that these people can't oblige to, because it took an action in suing somebody, because there is actual consequences that they had to face, and they did face it, because the, when they got the letter, the, the noise stopped. But they still had people coming, but the noise stopped. So, it worked. And these regulations are going to get with, remember, I'm just one person, one house. You, one house is effect, is going to affect four, or five, or six houses in that area. Not everybody's going to speak up. Everybody thinks, "Well, I guess that's the way we have to live with it." Well, there's people out here that won't, that has, that, that understand that it's not their, it's not a, there's, there's got to be a better way, so.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
The, the Airbnb that you sue, or the, the neighbor, was it a owner occupied, or was it a investor-owned?
It was, the, the gentleman lived in a two-and-a-half-million-dollar home in Orange County. Is, it was non-hosted area. And I did say the last time, I thought the hosted area, the hosted, uh, house, and I can only speak for a house, I can't speak for apartments, but the hosted house, that would alleviate ninety percent of the problem. But I understand what they're saying, that it would be very, very difficult, because she did, and I, and it really kind of bugged me, but she actually boasted that she made a hundred thousand dollars. The meeting, the first meeting we went to, she boasted. But you know what? I didn't have a problem with that, because I make three times that. It doesn't mean anything. What, what meant, though, is, is that I sued somebody, and they actually complied to what, what we wanted. So, they can do it. They can do it. But there has to be a force, and you are the force to make it happen.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Erica Garbey, to be followed by Doris.
Ms. Garbey, good evening.
Good evening. So, I've, I've spoke before, and, and actually, the gentleman before me shared with me today. I don't know if, if he wanted to mention this, but he is now aware of another S-T-R on his street.
Correct.
Go ahead, keep going.
So, I just wanted to, to mention that. I, I've been dealing with this situation for now almost two years. You know, S-T-Rs are not permitted, so it, it's something that I, I feel like we have to continue to come back and come back. But, you know, I have the faith that, you know, the quality of life in our neighborhoods to protect our families is, is worth being here tonight. I also feel that, you know, the income, the income keeps coming up, and, and I get that, but the, at the expense of us who are living right next door to one. You know, winter months are better, you know? So, I completely agree with the hundred-and-twenty days. Just this weekend, I had, you know, in a situation, there was about twelve cars. My mother came by, and she, you know, has a cane, can't really walk, and I had to drive, you know, down the street to bring her so she can come over for a visit. I just don't think it's fair. And, you know, I, I just want to come back to that quality of life and the protection of the neighborhoods. It's important. I have children, and I think it, it is something that, you know, I appreciate all, all that the subcommittee has proposed. Although I wish they, we could go back to no S-T-Rs, I know that that may not be possible. And so I do appreciate what has already been done. But I, I ask for, for this to continue and to be considered, and, and the framework that's been written up. I, I really do think that it'll keep that accountability of those owners right where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garbey. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Doris Luth, to be followed by Tammy Alvarado.
Ms. Luth, good evening.
Hi. Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, I just wanted to thank you all for your hard work in tackling the situation, because it is an emotional one, and I think on both sides and on all sides, you're going to have people happy and people not happy. But something really needs to be done to protect the, the residents that call Temecula Home and live here twenty-four-seven, okay? I understand people wanting to make money. Who doesn't want to make money? You know, but it shouldn't be at our personal happiness, again, the people that live there. And when the owners of the S-T-Rs are saying, "Oh, we employ gardeners and the pool man," well, if you have a house where a family lives in there, you're going to, you know, you're supplying, you're paying for the same people, too. And I consider my home my sanctuary. You know, it's where you come home after work or whatever, and, you know, if you're going to have a few neighbors that are having parties every now and then, okay, that's fine. But nobody's to be subjected to having this all the time. And most of these, I'm not saying most, but some of these S-T-R owners have more than one house, more than two, more than three, more than four, and they don't even live in Temecula. They don't live here. So, I mean, I understand Temecula's a great place where you're going to have people visiting, so there is the revenue. And my concern is, if you have these houses that are just S-T-Rs, if they were, if a regular family was living there, you would have the support of the mall, the income from, you know, people living here, shopping at the grocery store, the kids in school, getting money from the state for the schools. And I guess, you know, if they're buying up all this, the big, single-family homes, and you're displacing a lot of people that might want to call Temecula their, you know, forever home. So, then, just in closing, I know you're, it's a lot of hard work, and I hope that you'll be as diligent coming to some satisfaction for us in this as you are with, like, illegal marijuana places, because it seems you're right on board with that, on taking care of that. And this is actually, it's, since we've been started, this, it's illegal, illegal. And yet, it goes on. So, anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you, Ms. Luth. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tammy Alvarado, to be followed by Yoko Isaac.
Ms. Alvarado, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I have, I have also been to all the forums and the two city councils. I have four of these in our neighborhood, three within five doors of me. They are all unhosted. One of the owners does live there, but she goes to another city to stay with family while she rents it out to short-term rentals. So, no one's there to monitor the people. I'm a, I'm a permanent resident. I live here. A lot of the owners and property managers, they have relatives, they don't live here. They haven't been to the meetings. The ones that are in our development, they send their property manager to these meetings. They don't bother to show themselves. To me, that says they're not vested the way that I'm vested. Some on the opposing side feel that city, city's proposal was from citing with big money from the hotels. This was on social media. There was no acknowledgement to the permanent residents that have voiced their opposition to the city. You're, you're taking that into account, as well as them. Our communities are still grappling with the effects of unhosted. are still grappling with the effects of unhosted illegal STRs, and we would like to see a speedy resolution for their owners and the neighbors within the community that they operate in because the problem's growing. And they've been in my neighborhood to, my acknowledgement, I've been complaining to the city for about two and a half years now. And I'm told, sorry, they're prohibited, but we don't have a structure in place to do anything about it. Call the, call the sheriff's department, call the code enforcement, please babysit someone else's business so you can try to have a quality of life. Yes, we all have property rights. We have a right to make money. But as long as we're not breaking regulations, laws, or infringing on the rights of fellow property owners, they are doing that. The residents of Temecula are the ones that will have to continue to be vested in the community and not just, the community as a whole, not just the tourist industry that they keep talking about, and of course, their own pocketbook. This is, if this was home sharing, the way Airbnb was originated, it would have a couple of hosted rooms that occasionally rented out, and it probably wouldn't be as disturbing, not such a disturbing force in our neighborhoods. But because these are, operate like hotels with no employees on site, they are a disruption to the neighbors, and we are left there to monitor their, their business at our expense. She mentioned that tourism's growing. According to the website, the city website, the cities are only, the, the hotels are only about sixty-six percent occupied. They have more than enough room to handle our tourism, and more have been approved. I think like seven, seven more are coming. That when people go and drink at the wineries, you know, they're, they're drunk and they shouldn't be driving, so they can stay in our short-term rental. Well, now you're sending those drunk people into my home, my, my neighborhood, where my children are and where I live, and that we have to deal with now. And you don't because you don't live there. I have a lot of stress and anxiety over this. I no longer want to live in my neighborhood. I'm unfortunately stuck for now. And I guess, oh, Marietta, they mentioned Marietta, people might go move to Marietta. According to the city over there, they're going to be following you guys closely, and they're going to have something similar put in place. So with opposing interests and views, I recognize that this is a tough situation for everyone involved. Based on tonight's turnout and social media activity, both the opposing sides are not completely happy with the proposal, which means to me that the city performed their job well in not citing too far on one side or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Yoko Isaac to be followed by Jeremy Ogle.
Hello, Mayor. I saw your video, by the way, and you said that Temecula is the safest city, and it's great to raise a family here. And so we're a military family. In our street, there's a lot of children. And so an STR comes into our street, and it is a party house. Strangers every single night. So imagine, they're told to smoke outside, so strangers come outside, and they go up to my kids, my, my, I have a toddler, and I have a ten-year-old, like nine, now he's ten. And so they come up to him and they want to talk to him. So it, it's like, what? Strangers in our, in our, in my next door. It's concerning, you know, every night new strangers because they set up outside, like area for smoking. And so now I have to get cameras and twenty-four cent monitoring. It's scary, you know? This was a nice street to live in, and now it's not. So now, my son's bedroom is second floor. So his bedroom looks directly into the neighbor's pool. He has a beautiful view of Temecula. But now, because it's a party house, strangers, girls in, you know, bikinis, you know, and they're doing fun stuff in the pool and, you know. I literally had to block his windows with like tint screen, and he doesn't have that beautiful view anymore. Neither does my toddler, because I don't want to expose him to that, that kind of stuff. He's ten. He keep, he doesn't want, I don't want him seeing that kind of stuff. That's not appropriate for children. You know, party animals in the pool, his, he literally, his, the view of that for a ten-year-old is not appropriate. There really needs to be regulations for that. STRs do not belong in residential areas. It's, and if, if you are allowing it, it really needs to be regulated. You know, we call the police. I am one of those parents, concerned parents, that, you know, really is involved mom. I am an involved mom and I care about my kids. You come to my house, I'll show you the windows. There's no view of Temecula. I have to do that to my kids. It's sad. I'm a military family. My husband deployed. He sees my anxiety. He comes home from a year of deployment, and he has to come home to this, to my anxiety. He has enough to deal with. And he works at Camp Pendleton. He has a long drive. He's tired. And then he has to come home to noise, me waking up every minute, calling the police. They don't come. I have to wait up. It's a struggle. It is. And you can tell my voice, my anxiety. It is. So I really hope you can really, really handle this. Because our next-door neighbor, he doesn't. So I really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeremy Ogle to be followed by Alexandra DeCarlo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jeremy Ogle. I'm here to speak on behalf of my client, Expedia Group, which includes the vacation rental brands VRBO and HomeAway. You should have received an email this morning from our government relations manager, Walter Gonzalez, and I have copies that I'll hand to the city clerk for your reference tonight if you haven't seen the email yet. I'll summarize by saying that there's two major issues we'd like you to think about tonight. First, the proposal before you is a ban on, on whole-home, non-hosted, short-term rentals. And in city after city, we've seen that bans simply do not work. They're not effective at shutting down the complaints that you're hearing about tonight. And that's because bans have a tendency to create an underground economy that takes place outside of the oversight and control of the city. In contrast to a ban, we've seen that in heavily regulated environments with robust enforcement, that ninety to ninety-five percent of short-term rentals will not be subject to a single citation in a given year. And that's data direct from the city of Palm Springs. So in other words, with the right incentives in place in a regulated market, ninety to ninety-five percent of short-term rental homeowners are operating peacefully, responsibly, and with great care and respect for their neighbors. With those numbers in mind, it's clear that a ban is a blunt-force instrument that disenfranchises all of those responsible homeowners and denies them their property rights. So we urge you to reconsider this approach. The second issue I'd ask you to address is the issue of platform liability. The proposed framework includes a one thousand dollar fine against listing platforms for quote-unquote illegal listings. Federal law preempts these types of platform liability measures, specifically Title forty-seven of the U.S. Code, Section two thirty. This federal statute sets out one of the foundational principles of the internet, which is that websites will not be held liable for the content that is posted by users. Section two thirty provides broad immunity against attempts to penalize online providers like HomeAway for third-party user listings and advertisements. And we've cited a couple court cases that set the precedent in our letter. So we are to remove platform liability measures from any regulations you adopt. Now, having stated those two issues, I want to be clear that we support regulation of this industry. We believe it's necessary, and we'd like to help the city to find effective regulations for short-term rentals. So if you are willing to allow non-hosted, whole-home, short-term vacation rentals, we are willing to voluntarily support the following requirements on platforms. Number one, requiring our users to display a permit number or license number on their advertisements, which gives you the ability, makes enforcement a lot easier for you. Number two, removing listings with invalid permit numbers as identified by the city. Number three, providing the city with a monthly report of listing URLs and license numbers. Number four, providing the city with quarterly reports of aggregated listing and rental night data. And number five, educating operators who list on our platform by providing a direct link to applicable laws. And number six, collecting and remitting TOT. We believe these measures would be far more effective than a ban in, in enabling the city to pinpoint nuisances while preserving the rights of the overwhelming majority of short-term rental homeowners. Obviously, we can only agree to these things if non-hosted and whole-home vacation rentals are allowed under the ordinance. I recognize that this is a really challenging issue, so I thank you for the time that you've taken to consider all of our opinions, and thank you for the opportunity to participate in this process, and thank you for your service to the, to the city.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Alexandra DeCarlo to be followed by Carmen Batten.
Ms. DeCarlo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I have, I'm an owner of a vacation rental, a short-term rental, and it's a hundred percent of my income, which is really important. I'm here to oppose the city of Temecula imposing the occupancy limits on the short-term rental property, the occupancy limits of what is allowed in that home. I feel like that is something that the homeowner should decide. Ninety percent of my customers are multi-generational families coming to Temecula for a celebration, like a wedding or something, you know, not to host it at the home, but to enjoy it in the area. Aunts, uncles, cousins, brothers, sisters. There is a reasonable number of people that could be in a home under those circumstances without having any impact that's negative on the neighbors. What happens in the home as far as occupancy level has nothing to do with the things that that occupancy limit that you're looking at imposing is trying to do. What it's trying to do is limit the noise in the neighborhood and also limit the congestion in the parking. The occupancy limit isn't the goal. The goal is the noise. And there's many ways to limit the noise. And the way I manage it with the noise aware and it alerts me in advance and so on, that's done. Putting a limit on how many parking spaces are available for a short-term renter, rental is also a reasonable thing to do because potentially, the renters could just be taking up too much space compared to the neighbors. So putting some kind of a reasonable number on that, but not taking it away altogether. It, when I'm looking at the initial proposal in the city of Temecula, I'm looking at, one of the city's first steps is to take away the right of the property owner to decide what the occupancy should be in their house under the circumstances. When that doesn't infringe on the quality of life or the rights of their neighbors, then I don't think it's something that should be regulated or imposed on them. I think it could be managed, and I think that the goals could be met, which is a peaceful, good neighborhood situation coming from the short-term rentals, as long as they're managed properly. And, yeah, and I also was listening to Brandon earlier. I think he was talking about the short-term rentals being unpermitted and that they don't pay the TOT. And, you know, most of us do. The ones that are going to end up staying alive are the ones that are compliant and that pay the taxes and do that right now. And also, the fact that they're unpermitted, there was no, there was no process of permit. So the fact that they don't have a permit is because it wasn't also available. Once it does become available, we're going to go get one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Carmen Batten to be followed by Rocky Madden.
Hi. My name is Carmen Batten. I am a member of the business community here. I sell commercial insurance. I have also rented a Airbnb in the community for, for a memorial for my father because he happened to pass away. I do have some very stated opinions on this. I think that it would behoove the city of Temecula to not cut off its nose to spite its face, so to speak. Let's go ahead and take advantage of the fact that we can earn revenue from allowing short-term rentals to exist. I also have the opinion that I do not think that a condo or an apartment should be allowed to get a short-term rental permit. And I realize there are some people behind me that are probably going to be really angry that I said that, but I'm going to say it. I think that regulations are absolutely needed. They're absolutely needed. I don't think anybody should be allowed to own more than three short-term rentals in the county, especially if they don't live within the city. But I also know that as a renter, I would not have, I, I would have not had, I would have not rented the Airbnb that I did if I was going to have an owner on site. I was having a memorial for my father, and I was actually able to bring my sister, myself, my children, my grandchildren, and her children all to one place to have a celebration of life. The Airbnb that I rented happened to have one of those little noise-monitoring things. I can tell you I never got a phone call because we weren't that loud. I think that's a wonderful way to do business. But I, I, I believe that regulated amount of existence is not in our best interest as a business community. And I do believe that allowing somebody to have a complete monopoly on them is not in our best interest either. So I just wanted to come here and give you my opinions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rocky Madden to be followed by Kelly Bellini.
Mr. Madden.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I've lived in Temecula for fifteen years. I own a business in Elton, Temecula as well. I love Temecula, so I don't want to do anything to jeopardize my neighbors or the community. I manage a couple of Airbnbs in Temecula. The one thing I wanted to share about that is that we've provided a service, unbeknownst to us, to a lot of local residents who have gone through insurance claims for their loss of their home and, or they're working on their house. And, and these families are not able to stay in a, in a hotel situation, or it's not ideal for them. I currently have a family who has four adults and eight children, and they also have an emotional support dog. It would have been very difficult for them to stay in a, in a hotel. So I'm working with an insurance adjuster on that, and they're staying in our, in our home because we're able to provide them a furnished rental with everything there while their home's being worked on. And I know that previously they've spoken on the fact that we're also renting to families who are able to come and celebrate together as, with multiple generations. That's not possible in hotel rooms. And then the other thing I just wanted to compliment you guys on is that we would love this framework. We would love the permit process. We love the regulations. The only thing is doing a non, not allowing a non-hosted Airbnb is very difficult in terms of the ability to get a customer who wants to come as a family and enjoy the home. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kelly Bellini to be followed by Larry Hayes.
Good evening.
Hello. The greatness of the community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members. A wise woman once said, "That wise woman was me." I'm totally kidding. It wasn't. It was Coretta Scott King. I look around this room, behind me especially, and I see a lot of passion. But what I want to focus on a little bit more is the compassion. The new proposal that we saw here definitely focuses a lot on the compassion for the mistreated citizens of Temecula who have been living next door to bad, bad owners. And that's just what I call them, bad owners, bad hosts. It's completely unfair what these people have been put through, living next to party houses, and this needs to be regulated, one hundred percent. I don't think any of us think that there shouldn't be regulation because there should be. However, it's really hard to stand behind all of us being punished for the actions of a few bad owners who we a hundred percent need to work together to eliminate. But I don't- But I don't, like I said before, want to forget about compassion towards another group of citizens as well, and those are the citizens who are depending on the short-term rental income for their livelihood. My name is Kelly Bellini, as you heard. My family moved here in 1986, so I think I win so far. I'm not sure, but we'll see. I grew up here, my family's here, I plan to retire here, in fact, because I was able to buy my house at the right time here. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to all of us here today. Like I said before, I 100% agree on having regulations, but I don't think sweeping huge regulations are the way to go right now. I don't see why it's not better to start a little bit smaller with regulations that we can actually enforce. My main issue with the proposal is that it states that we are only to have hosted short-term rentals. So right off the bat, we knock out 65% of the short-term rentals that are in Temecula. Non-hosted short-term rentals here in Temecula are run by families. They're run by single moms, they're run by retired single women, to name a few, and they're run by people who work nights sometimes. All of those groups are basically going to be eliminated if we only have hosted short-term rentals, because for one, the people that work at night won't be able to be there from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and two, all those other groups I mentioned, the families, the single women, are not gonna feel comfortable having their seven-year-old child in a bedroom next to a complete stranger. I can pretty much see that most of us would agree with that. So I kind of feel like that part of the proposal is really discriminating against those families who are short-term rental owners, and kind of just saying, "Well, short-term rentals should really just be run by, I don't know, single men and maybe a couple," you know? Besides that, on the other side, we're also eliminating those families who come to Temecula and stay in short-term rentals. I know for myself, I travel with my husband, my child, my mom, and my mother-in-law, and my brother. We go all over the world with this group of six, and we search for short-term rentals. If a town doesn't have them, we don't stay in that town. We want to be together. We don't want to be in three different hotel rooms, having to run down hallways to get to each other, and we don't get the same amenities that we get when we get to stay together in those hotel rooms. So we're stopping families from coming to Temecula if the rentals are only gonna be hosted. I can also go into disabled people who are coming to Temecula to stay. Obviously, it's totally easier for them to stay in a short-term rental, close parking, lots of accessibility facilities for them, much easier than staying in a hotel. And then if we eliminate those families from coming to town, we're obviously gonna eliminate a lot of the revenue that those families bring to Temecula. They're the ones that go to Penny Pickles Workshop, they're the ones that go eat at 1909, they're the ones that spend money in Old Town Temecula. Who doesn't spend as much money is the people who choose to stay in hosted short-term rentals. If you're choosing to stay in a hosted short-term rental, that means you get basically one bedroom, that means you're a single person, or maybe a couple, but you're looking for a budget, man. The hosted short-term rentals cost less money, so you're not the group that's gonna come to town and use all the facilities that we have available to us. I know I'm gonna talk too long, so I'm gonna cut it down now, but Temecula is about family, so please, please, don't forget to have compassion for the families who make a living via their short-term rentals.
Thank you, Ms. Bellini, your time's up.
Thank you. I know, I know, I know, I'm sorry. I knew I'd do it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Hayes, to be followed by Mike Mason.
Mr. Hayes, are you here? Nope. Okay, next speaker, Mike.
Mike Mason.
Mr. Mason, good, or good evening.
Good evening. As she said, my name is Mike Mason. As I think some of you know, I've been here for many years, longtime resident of the Temecula Valley. I remember when we incorporated. I actually remember 10 years prior to that, we actually came out here, my mom and my sisters came out here in 1977. I've also been very blessed to be able to live and work here in town, so I'm also a great advocate of Temecula. I love your theme this year. I've loved Temecula, 30th anniversary. I'm here today, what I asked for this was that this was, you know, to get a chance to talk with staff and work with this ordinance. I felt very relieved when I found out this is not gonna get adopted tonight, that this is actually a working draft, a framework. I welcome the opportunity to talk to Brandon. I'm also, as some of you know, very active in our Board of Realtors here. I was actually Board Director for Association, and for a short time I was actually a CER Director here on a state level. I know even on a state level, they're struggling on how to address short-term rentals. I welcome the opportunity to talk with Brad. I came prepared to speak on this item per item, because I just received his framework here last Friday afternoon, and hopefully we get something resolved, you know, by, not by the next meeting, but by next month. And with that, I want to be, keep it brief. I mean, you'll hear, you hear pros and cons, and I think we're on the same page.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Brandon, call me. Thank you.
The next speaker is Steve with Blue Pacific, and Debra Nicholson to follow.
Do we call you Mr. Blue or Mr. Pacific?
Either one.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Steve with Blue Pacific Pools. I'm the owner. I've been in the service industry and construction industry for over 18 years. I service over 100 pools here in the Temecula Valley, and I also am a resident here, and I love living here, it's a great place. Anyways, being a service industry for a long time and working for a lot of residential accounts and commercial accounts, the benefit of having a commercial account, stuff like that, is when something breaks, it's fixed automatically, there's no, "I can't, I can't pay for this right now, I want to wait to fix this till next summer." The short-term rentals, in a way, to me, have been like that toward me for my business, because when something goes out, they fix it right away. They want their pools and spas in great working condition so their guests could utilize it and enjoy them, which has been good for my business. Another thing that I've been working on with my short-term rental customers is automation systems, which is great for the people that are worried about the noise problem, stuff like that. So the homeowner who's not at the home can see that it's 10 o'clock at night, can look on their phone, and turn their spa off, you can turn their heater off, the pumps off, there's no noise, shut the lights off, party's over. So that's been great for my business also, and just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Debra Nicholson, to be followed by Gil Castro.
Ms. Nicholson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone. I am here for the regulations of the Airbnbs to some extent. I'm one of the people that watch them as they walk through the front door, because I can see them on the camera. I watch the noise levels inside, I watch them go outside, and I'm one, I will go over there and call them, or call them, or I'll go over there, or I'll kick them out if I have to, and I've done that numerous times. It has given me employment, my son employment. I just think that if you're going to try to make it where it has to be owner-occupied, you can have property managers that really watch out for the house, just as well as one of the owners of the house. And I just think that if we all work together, that we could come up with some kind of plan that is good for everyone, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Gil Castro, to be followed by Alan Wilbanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Gil Castro. I was recently approached, oh, you can see I'm a Storm fan, recently approached by Jessica Abrego, who manages some of the Airbnb properties here in Temecula. My wife and I were married in Temecula 2015. We also have several wineries that we're members at, and we support a lot of local businesses around here. I am a small business owner in the Lake Yelsonor area, but a lot of my business is out here in Temecula. Reason for being here today is I was approached by Jessica, we met at a winery, and I usually do a lot of my networking either at Starbucks or winery, or wherever people listen to conversations that I have. So I supply Temecula wineries, small businesses, with specialty food products that you can't get from a large company. I supply them with local produce. Growers here in the area, local honey farmers depend on that. Goat cheese company, another specialty cheese company that does business out here in Temecula, local cookie companies, cracker companies, and et cetera, and goes on. So when you come to Temecula, you want a personal experience. So when you go to that house and you rent it, you don't want to, like, have to run out to a store and grab something, so what I'm providing is a box of specialty food items that they can have readily available as soon as they come in the door, and they can actually take with them to enjoy it for the day. It's not something that they can get by going to a local store. I'm not taking away from their business, I'm just adding to the experience that they have here in Temecula. So I'm just advocating for smaller businesses. I love the city symbolizes old traditions, you know, that's what you're built on, old traditions, the people coming here and making lives, and then for new opportunities for people to make a living and have the opportunity to do business in Temecula. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Alan Wilbanks, to be followed by Niru Sehgal.
Mr. Wilbanks, good evening.
I always get a little bit nervous in front of people, I apologize. Thank you, Mayor, and Council, for your time and consideration for this important issue. I'm against 19, but I'm with the people who spoke earlier. We owe the community, we care so much about it, keep it peaceful. With respect to the one short-term rental that was presented in the summary here tonight as typical is by far an outlier, no one that cares about their investment is going to rent a five-bedroom home to 20 people and opening up the parties. I would like to see that link, if you got it, it'd be interesting. It's not typical, though, I agree with you that. I've been a Temecula resident since 2014, and I love, love, love this community. The reason I provide short-term rental is to share our city with the incredible experience that I have, the privilege to experience every day. Everyone that I share my home with has an incredible time enjoying the wineries, Old Town, and interacting with our amazing and friendly citizens. This is a direct reflection of every city council member here and all the ones that have preceded you. We have built a fabulous community, and everyone here should be incredibly proud. One thing that I'd like to highlight here is even without the temporary occupancy tax, owners who provide short-term rentals pay property taxes, which support our city and long-term agendas, and our top-ranked schools, even though our temporary residents never use these facilities or services. In addition, visitors to Temecula bring $780 million annually to our local businesses, such as restaurants and other retail income, to the city. That would increase, hopefully, with more rentals, but we'll see. It would be smart if we could embrace these temporary visitors and allow them to contribute to our community with their dollars. I ask that two aspects of the proposal be looked at extremely carefully and perhaps excluded. The proposal to have owners be on-site between the hours of 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM will effectively kill the home-sharing community and kill these revenues I spoke about earlier from the tourists. Can you imagine if upon check-in at a hotel at 9:00 PM, the front desk clerk knocks on your door and says, "Slide over." By Temecula law, I have to sleep with you in the room until 5:00 AM. That seems to be an undue burden on the host and, of course, the visitor. And something not required, if you just rent your home out to a long-term renter, please also consider the limit of 120 days per year. Noise concerns, parties, and parking issues that this proposal is trying to address, rightfully so, will still be present during those 120 days. The hosts that I know want to work together to tackle these issues directly and honestly with the residents of this community. Limiting visitors and income to our city and businesses doesn't seem to be the answer to me. Lastly, I know for a fact that no host wants noise, parties, and ultimately damage to their investments. If we make sensible guidelines, we can work together to keep the peace. It was interesting to me that the framework did not mention already existing technologies, and a couple of them have been presented here today. One was the noise aware, which is a decibel meter, and you can set that. Another one are doorbell cameras as well, which we can keep monitoring when we're not there. If we could try mandating these technologies as, to keep these abuses from happening, I think that would be much more effective, and it could also address maybe some of the other concerns about speeding up this process. That would be one way to do it, if we could, you know, do it through technology, just as the technology has kind of brought this to our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Niru Sehgal, to be followed by Mary Zulo.
Ms. Sehgal, good evening to you.
Hi, my name is Niru Sehgal. I've lived in Temecula since 1992. I have two children that were born in Temecula, at least while we were living here. And believe it or not, Mayor Pro-Tam Stu had given hair, their first haircuts to both my boys, so...
Oh, Stu.
They loved going there and watching that little chuchu go around. So I can't believe how time has passed. It's, we've been here a long time, and the changes that the city's gone through, they're amazing changes, this is a beautiful city, I wouldn't live anywhere else. I manage rental properties, I also am a Realtor in the area. I have two short-term rentals, one is in the City of Temecula and one is in wine country. So I've seen both sides of it. I'm very strict with my rentals. Like everybody's saying, the noise aware works perfectly. We know exactly when the noise starts and we put an end to it. We have cameras in the front and in the front driveway. Some of, some of the owners have them in the back also, so they can figure out what's going on in the back, and they work really good. As soon as I see two or three more cars than were expected, I drive over there. Our phones are alerted, everything is automated, like he said, with a pool, I can shut anything off anytime, so it's awesome. I found that the short-term, the reason I converted one over last year was because I just found them easier to manage. I was having a lot of problems with the regular rentals, barking dogs, them not keeping up the property, not letting the gardener in the backyard, the front was getting weeds, they weren't letting, you know, they weren't getting after the gardener, and I'd have to go out there all the time. The house was being trashed from the inside. With the Airbnb that we started last year, the house is maintained like it's a model home all the time. People come in, we have strict rules, they leave, they have to clean up after themselves, and the trash is put away, the trash is taken, and the house is left clean. You can walk in anytime after they check out, and you'll see that the house is maintained front and back. The neighbors are happy because the property is maintained properly. And that's with both of my rentals. Every time I go over there to check, I talk to the neighbors, they all have my number, which is what a lot of them need to do, is just communicate with the neighbors. Here's my number, call me. And I think that should be a rule, that should be put in, into your thing, that the immediate neighbors need to be known that you have a short-term rental, and here's the number, call me if there's a problem, and it'll nip it in the butt, they won't have to call the So like I said, this, I've got three rentals this month that haven't paid their rent, and I'm chasing them down. And I know with the short-term rentals, I get the money before they check in, so that's another reason I like to do that. I haven't converted the others because I think still, you know, there is a lot more work in a short-term rental than is regular air, I mean, regular rentals. As far as the three-strike rule that was mentioned in the proposal, what we found works better with the three-strike is if it's a rolling three-strike. If you just have a three-strike and there's no end, is it for five years? Is it for 10 years that you have to get the three strikes? So it should be clarified that this is a rolling three years, so within a one year, if you get a legitimate complaint, then that's a strike one, or a strike two, or a strike three. This keeps the owners responsible and therefore will keep their property better maintained. Riverside County's already got that rule in, in the works, so I think they have some great rules, and if we can follow some of their rules, that would be very time-saving and less money spent on recreating something that's already working. So I think definitely that needs to be looked at. There was a thing that 30 minutes, the owner has to respond, that's really tough sometimes. What if you're driving? What if you're stuck on the freeway? What if you don't have good service? I think a good amount is 60 minutes, gives the owner... I think a good amount of sixty minutes gives the owner at least sixty minutes to clarify the problem.
Ms. Segal, your time is up.
I'm sorry.
Now, don't apologize, your time is up.
Thank you again for your time, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Mary Zulo, to be followed by Kimberly Palmer.
Hello, Ms. Zulo.
Hi, how are you? My name is Mary Zulo, I am a local realtor here in Temecula, and I actually live in Temecula. So I've been here for about two to three years. Um, I am a very proactive owner, I do have an Airbnb here. And, um, I just wanted to, uh, talk about a couple of things. We do need short-term housing for just even the community. Um, there's people who can't find a rental that need a temporary rental until they can find something. People who move out of state, but have a house that's in escrow, that, you know, they need, they need a place to stay until it closes escrow. Um, you know, floods, fires, you name it, we, we still, there, there is a need. And these are homes that you can't have somebody there and have a family there as well, it just doesn't work, as far as being hosted. Um, the hundred and twenty-day limit, I feel like there shouldn't be a limit, especially if we're gonna have a business license and we're gonna create it as a business, then it's the only, only, uh, business that here in Temecula that I know that you're, you're limited to a hundred and twenty days of business. Um, and the other thing I was gonna, uh, comment on was the permit fee. I know you had said a possible four hundred dollars, I think the city of Riverside is two fifty, and then, um, a hundred and twenty-five dollars to renew. So that's something that maybe we could go by those, um, fee structures. And then the signage, um, that you're requiring to put on every front door, the name of the owner or the property manager, whoever. Um, I feel like the way they do it in Oregon, 'cause I have an Airbnb in Oregon, is they have a, a letter or basically like a postcard that goes out to all the immediate neighbors, and it has the owner's name, the proper ma- property manager's name, and, um, the rules and regulations, what to do if there's a problem, who to call, and so forth. Um, instead of putting a sign on a door, I think it just tells everybody that, hey, this is an Airbnb, it's not used all the time, it's gonna be vacant, and I think we may have some crime issues as far as leaving a sign on the door. Let's see. I think as far as, um, I, I do believe we need, um, we need regulation, because I'm, I feel bad for these people who are living by owners that are not being responsible owners, having these Airbnbs. So I, I, my heart goes out to them, I do feel bad. I am proactive, I'm there, I'm usually there within thirty minutes. If I, um, if there is an issue, I am on-site, and I will talk to the people. If I'm not at least there, I will be calling them. So I've had one issue in the whole time that I've had my Airbnb, and I've had it for over two years. So, um, everybody else's families, I don't, I don't allow parties. So let's see, I think... Oh, and then I do have cameras, cameras in the front, cameras in the back, and backed on my foot, my, my watch, I can look at my places right now and see how many people are at my place. If there's more than six people, I'm gonna go over there and I'm gonna talk to them, or I'm gonna call them. My camera in the back, I can actually talk to them through the camera and say, hey, look, you guys are being too noisy, you need to, you know, you need to calm, calm down. My quiet hours are nine o'clock. I love my neighbors, nine o'clock is my quiet hours. And some people say, oh, well, you know, my, and my rules are right on my, my Airbnb, and they'll ask me, uh, why is it nine o'clock? I said, well, because I have neighbors, and, you know, they need to sleep. So, um, so yeah, I mean, I'm very strict on my rules, my regulations, and we need it. Unfortunately, I don't like taking property rights from owners, but I do feel like we do need some regulation for, for these people over here, for sure. Thank you so much. If you need any help, I'm available, I've had Airbnbs in other states, and, um, I'll be more than happy to share what I know as far as how they've regulated things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kimberly Palmer, to be followed by Andrew Georgitisis.
Thank you, council members, for your time and consideration this evening. If it's okay, I'd like to give, we have some signage I'd like to give to...
You can put it right there on the table, if, do you want us to see it now?
Yeah, I would like to give it to Randy if that's possible, and she can maybe...
Well, if you want everybody to see it, put it right there on the table, in between the little, little, uh, markers there.
You may have to unroll it.
And it'll come up on the big screen.
I've been asked to speak tonight about a couple of things, signage and the permit placement. Um, and actually, an over, an overview of what I'd like to address tonight is just the concept of unintended consequences. There, in the proposal, the way it's currently written, there are a few areas where there are some unintended, unintended consequences that I think we could anticipate. And I'm relieved that tonight's not the final draft. Um, when I think about the unintended consequences, I'd like for those to be considered. And one of the things, um, as far as I'm a longstanding member in the real estate community in town, um, been here in real estate for over twenty years, lived in the community longer than that, and I have firsthand experience with signage leading to problems on properties. So during the real estate crash, we had to identify properties or put, you know, no trespassing or foreclosure in the window, and that was actually an unintended consequence of that. We were attempting to protect the prop- property and make it easier for code enforcement, but an unintended consequence to that was it really invited vagrancy, vandalism, squatters, and just a whole seedy element that, um, we didn't anticipate by doing that. I see the same thing being a possibility with the way we have the permit currently, you know, to post the permit on the door or on the gate. And we have a workaround for that that we'd like to propose, and that workaround would be, um, notifying all the neighbors, say, within two hundred feet of the property with a postcard, with the permit, the, you know, complaint protocol to follow, our personal phone call as a first, first, you know, course of action to eliminate the unintended, potential unintended consequence of vagrancy, um, vandalism, and squatters coming in with leases. You know, they can produce leases that they've signed to somebody on Craigslist, and then it's just problematic for everybody. And as far as the signage, we have signage, um, that we post in the homes, and those are about the noise ordinances, which we take very seriously. Excuse me. And some of our, um, people in the air, the Short Term Alliance post these on the property, letting them know what the strict requirements are that the county and city are imposing. And we actually impose sanctions. Some people sanction two hundred dollars after the first call, three hundred dollars after, you know, like if they have to go over. And what some of our Short Term Alliance members are doing is asking the neighbors to call, and if there is a legitimate complaint that we have on our noise aware, that's the key here, we have to legitimize the complaint. The fee is actually split between the parties that were injured. So I know some of the managers, if they collect a three hundred dollar fee, they apologize to the neighbors and say, here's a hundred dollars to you, and here's a hundred dollars to you for your inconvenience, thank you for notifying me. The neighbors are comfortable with that, they, they're, they're not resistant to make the call at all, it's working like a charm. We also, on many of the short-term rentals, post evacuation, um, inside bedroom doors, so when you close the bedroom doors, we have evacuation policies, you know, how to evacuate in case of an emergency, um, local, you know, law enforcement numbers, who to call in case of an emergency. So our signage in the homes, we feel, um, is better than any signage that could be placed outside of the home and could have, avoid the potential unintended consequence. Another unintended consequence that we see, we're, we see ourselves as a lodging alternative. We, as, um, part of the answer to the lodging alternative, as a lodging alternative. With wine country growing, um, slated to grow and double, and our hotels are growing, but they're not growing at the same time capacity as the number of people that will be coming through our town. And we would like to op- be able to offer our, our type of lodging as an alternative. An unintended consequence to not being able to do that is everybody that comes into our town to stay in an Airbnb, for the most part, is coming to go to the wineries, to Pachanga, Galway's now got a, a concert venue, and, or go to the breweries. And pretty much all of those things involve alcohol. So a potential un- and currently the way it works is they come get an Airbnb, for the most part, they Uber to a destination, Uber back because it's within five miles of their Airbnb, that's why they select that Airbnb. And potential unintended consequence is that if we, if we eliminate most of this, um, the way it's written today, we, we have four thousand people coming through Wilson Creek a week, that's twelve grand a month. Just Wilson Creek alone, that's twelve thousand people that could potentially be drinking and driving on the roads, that we don't, we haven't even really considered that as a possibility yet. They, well, they'll drive and go home rather than go get their Uber and go two miles, you know, to the Airbnb. Just an unintended consequence that I'd like a little bit more research. The third thing, um, as far as an unintended cons- un- intended consequence is, in its prohibitive form, it really has a s- a possibility of driving a lot of people underground. That some people can't stay in business and pay all of this with the limitations that are put on it. Or, for example, you know, me, if I happen to work at night and I can't be at the property, then that, I lose income for that day. And I think that Airbnb or shared residences are here to stay. I would like to see it legitimized, I would like to see it regulated, and I would like to see the regulations balanced so that both parties' needs are met. And I stand in sympathy with you with having young children. I would love nothing more than to, to visit with you, we can find out who your neighbor is, we are all about problem-solving.
Ms., um, uh, how do you say your name again?
My name?
Yes.
Kimberly Palmer.
Ms. Palmer, uh, your time is up.
Okay, thank you so much for your consideration, I sincerely appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Georgitisis, um, to be followed by Thomas DeCarlo.
Good evening, Andrew. See if I can get that right there. Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, thank you for having us, listening to us this evening. My name is Andrew Georgitisis, and I've been here in Temecula, the city of Temecula, for over four years. One of the reasons that I came here is I believed that Temecula was a business-friendly environment. And at that time, when I came to Temecula, there was about forty wineries, and as you all know, now increasing to about, uh, sixty-plus, to about a hundred wineries in twenty-twenty. So I wanted to participate, like many businesses around here, with enjoying in the benefits of this wineries and the growth of the winery, expansion of the wineries. And so I looked for a business that I could invest in, and what I found was this new opportunity called STR. And it's a great opportunity, and I invested in it. I did it the right way. I set up a business, I got my business license, went to State of California, I got a business license from them, an LLC. I went and paid my eight hundred dollars to them and nine hundred dollars for their minimum tax, and I paid all the things I'm supposed to do in order to be a business. And I found that I'd even wanted to pay my occupational tax, uh, to the city of Temecula. However, there was no vehicle to do that. Anyways, the point is, is I set it up as a proper business, and so I learned along the way and I grew this, this business. And so one of the things that I see was that, as an STR owner, I am all about regulation and about running it professionally and legitimately as a business. And so when I started to look at this framework, and I see this framework, and one of the first things I see in the framework is, hey, you're gonna be restricted to running a hundred and twenty days as a business. Well, you're asking me to get a business license, and I will do that. You ask me to pay taxes, I will do that. I'll do everything you ask me to do, but you don't ask any other business to run a hundred and twenty days. You don't go down to the local, you know, gambling cowboy and say, hey, guys, you can only serve steaks for a hundred and twenty days, sorry. The rest of the time, you have to pay all of your bills, you have to do everything normal, pay all of your taxes, but you can only work for a hundred and twenty days. And I know what you were saying, you're saying, well, you're using a home as, you know, you're using a residency, a home, for a business. Well, home-based businesses are here to stay, not just STR, but how about the CPA, who works from home? Are we gonna regulate that CPA? We're gonna say, guy, you can only work a hundred and twenty days a year? And the rest of the time, I'm sorry, you have to pay your bills, but not my problem. Many, many, many people work from home, have home offices, write off their taxes and so forth, use their home as a business. They're not gonna be restricted to a hundred and twenty days, or two cars in the driveway, or whatever it is. I completely sympathize with the residents around that have noise issues. Absolutely, we put in noise aware, we do all those things, we already talked about all that stuff, so I'm not gonna go back through that. So that was one of the things that I'm, I'm concerned about. The second is not offering an alternative and saying, look, it has to be your primary residence. Why? Why can't we have something, if it's a second home, that we have a professional management company do the things that you're asking the primary resident, the host, to do, such as the thirty-minute thing? So yes, if there's somebody who has a second home, who lives in Orange County, and wants to have their, their home managed professionally locally, that's one of the requirements. So it's your primary residence, or it's managed by a, a, a professional management company. That can be, it's licensed by the city of Temecula. They can take the test, they can learn the regulations, they can know the sixty-minute rule, they can know the exit strategy, noise aware, blah, 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 blah. You know, one of the things that I run in my professional business is we run twenty-four-hour security on the home. So I have a security person that runs around and shuts everything down at ten o'clock, right? There's no, there's no, it's not done like ad hoc. In other words, the problem with the current regulation is the person who's gonna do this is not gonna be a professional businessperson. They're gonna be sort of the hacker, the weekend hacker, they're gonna do a little bit, and then they're gonna split out of town, and then there's gonna be all these noise issues, because they're not gonna invest like a business does. They're not gonna invest in the noise monitoring, in the cameras, and everything else. And the hundred and twenty-day rule, and the fact that it's their primary residence, those, those are gonna shut out people who want to do this professionally and legitimately. And that's somebody like myself. So thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Georgitisis. Next and last speaker, I believe.
Uh, the next speaker is Thomas DeCarlo, followed by our last speaker, Anna Lopez.
Okay. Mr. DeCarlo.
First of all, Mayor Nigar and the rest of the city council members, thank you so much for listening to us, it's the end of the night. Um, I'm gonna be the last speaker for our, our alliance, so, um, I think I'll bring it, try to wrap some things up. Um, I've been, uh, in Temecula for ten years, I've been a resident of Temecula for ten years, six years in Red Hawk. I was going to buy a vacation house, I lived in Torrance, and a friend of mine, I was going, I was in Palm Springs, and he goes, why are you buying there? He goes, what about, what about Red Hawk, what about Temecula? And I was like, most people could hardly spell it. But, um, I, I, I go, what, that place where we played that golf course, Red Hawk? And he goes, that's it, he goes, you gotta go there, don't do what you're gonna do. And I went to Red Hawk, and I bought my first house, moved my family to, uh, Temecula. Best thing I ever did, sold the company in Torrance, but did everything I could to get here. And I am so Red Hawk-blooded here, Temecula a hundred percent. Uh, but about six years after I moved here, um, I wanted to do vacation rentals. And I looked around, and really the city of Temecula did not have regulations in place. And that was really the problem, is that the county of Riverside was ahead of the game in that. And they saw that they needed lodging for the wineries and all the different arguments that are brought up here, they're really legitimate. I think they also are legitimate arguments for the city of Temecula as well. But the regulations weren't there, and I met with this, the, um, uh, county, uh, councilman, Chuck Washington, and I was trying to decide how I was gonna invest my money from my company into doing something different for my life. And, uh, he convinced me that they were gonna be, they needed this to happen, that they could work with vacation rentals, and that they were going to be proactive with ordinances. And in fact, what I wanted to do was go through a couple of the highlights of that ordinance, because I think they took a very simple but very effective approach. And if you adopt a lot of what they're doing and, and start to look at what they've done, I think this could really be an effective solution for this group. And all of my businesses are in the wine country now. I don't have anything in the city of Temecula. But I also take great pride in running my properties right, and I know a lot of these folks do as well. So I was gonna go through some highlights of that, because I think they're really applicable. So, you know, the main reason why I did this was actually to have a second living, to live in Temecula. It's really hard to live out here and not commute, like, two hours to, to, to have a living. So there's a lot of businesses and support industries that are related to, uh, this particular industry, and you've heard that. But when I came to Temecula early on, and I'd go to the rod run, I couldn't stay here. I can't take my family and put them in the Motel Six or even almost Embassy Suites. I could never visit with my brother and his family and have the experiences that we, we have. Early on, I got into this, and we went on an amazing vacation where we went and we did vacation rentals. I was an early adopter, and I was convinced on it. If you guys haven't done it, it's the way to go. And the people here care about these properties, they're absolutely beautiful, immaculate. They're more secure in a lot of ways than a lot of the, uh, properties just next-door neighbor, because we have cameras. Somebody goes into one of my houses, they've got a problem. Somebody decides they're gonna have a noise problem in one of my properties, I know about that before my neighbors, who know me well and are on a list because the county of Riverside requires my neighbors to be notified. They know me, and they'll call me, and I will mitigate that problem before, before they even call me. I can see the noise aware telling me the problems in the living room. They came home from a wedding at eleven o'clock, cause they shut it down. I see the living room erupt, I get a text. Couple minutes later, I see him go out on the balcony. Couple minutes later, I see him go out on the balcony, I'm calling him, and I'm either on my way there, or I'm talking to people before anything ever happens. I have a thousand rentals, 'cause I have several properties in the wine country, and I have three difficult rentals. A difficult rental is where me trying to call them and do other things like that didn't work, and I had to show up. Only one of them resulted in a call to the county of Riverside. They do have a nonofficial three-strikes program. If you, everything is considered to be detrimental, any kind of a noise complaint that results in...
Mr. DeCarlo, your, your time is up.
Yeah. So, what, am I at time?
Your, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing tonight. Take care now. Next speaker?
The last speaker is Anna Lopez.
Ms. Lopez, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, all the council members. Thank you for your time, your consideration on this issue. My name is Anna Lopez, and I've lived in the area since nineteen ninety-nine. Um, this was the year my husband was near his retirement from the United States Marine Corps, and we decided that this area was what we wanted our children to be raised at and, uh, go to school. Both my husband and I were very involved with our extracurricular activities, uh, where we donated countless hours to support their choices of drama and marching band. After retiring from the Marine Corps, my husband worked as a correctional deputy in Temecula. I currently work as a human resources assistant at a local charter school. We love this area, and we decided to stay and call it home versus going back to Texas or Portugal. I would like to state that I support a short-term rental. I would like if, to ask that a hundred-and-twenty-day max would be removed as a part of a requirement. We thought about hosting to help us build our retirement. Military life has been a blessing to us, but as maybe, many of you may know, it does not provide a lot of extra income to build retirement. Now that our children are both out on their own, both with college degrees, that we, um, thought that would be a perfect opportunity to save for our retirement, to assure we do not become a burden to our children at our old age. Both my husband and I are very good citizens, and I've made sure to take all precautions to ensure that our guests are comfortable while respecting both of our home and our neighborhood. We have outside cameras, both in the backyard and in the front, and noise devices. We told our immediate neighbors that we are hosting and provided them with both of our phone number and our manager's phone number, and made it very clear that we wanted to build our retirement at not a cost that disturbs our neighbors. We are hoping to put ourselves, that you put ourselves on our shoes, and give consideration to the proposed hundred-and-twenty-day minimal rental. Our bills do not stop coming after a hundred-and-twenty days on a calendar year. If we are limited to how many days we can rent our home, we will also be limited on how much money we can save for retirement. We are asking that you will allow us to operate three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, just like any other business, as long as we comply with the rules. Did I mention that we like and appreciate rules? We have had a very structured life, as you may imagine, by the jobs and careers that we have chosen. I would like to mention a very personal issue, which, in fact, that our area has many wineries and breweries doing business here. Beautiful places that have been approved and built on this area for the enjoyment of many, which a very good percentage stay at our rentals. We are allowing these visitors to come and enjoy what we have to offer, which brings a lot of revenue to the cities. This is where it becomes very dear to my heart. My grandfather was killed by drunk drivers. We all do understand that people that come to wineries and breweries come to visit and drink. Correct? Do we really want them to drive back to their homes in LA, San Diego, or wherever they come from? Would any of you, would any of us want them to harm us or any of our family members? Maybe some of our residents' lives are in your hands. I am sure I'm not alone when I say that I would prefer that they take over to our rental than to go and drive to where they come from. Our rentals also bring tax dollars to the city. Please allow us to continue to run our rentals as long as we follow rules that are created for the safety of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I see we have no more speakers, correct? So we're gonna move over to council discussion. Uh, Mayor Protem Stewart, who is on the subcommittee, um, you have the mic.
Okay. So I just want to give you guys the genesis of this whole thing, because, um, when I came on city council, January two thousand seventeen, one of the first meetings I had was about short-term rentals and what we're gonna do with them. And at that time, in two thousand seventeen, there were approximately three hundred, and we're talking the peak, too. You know, we're talking summer, summer numbers is, is a lot higher than the two-twenty-four that, you know, he posted. So it's more like four, four-fifty, once we hit summertime. So, um, so anyways, that's, a, and only just like two years previous to that, the city council did a quick little survey to see how many to, and there was only like thirty. So we saw an exponential growth in just a couple of years. So that's when the regulation, uh, uh, came into play, that we gotta somehow control it or slow it or something, because what we were looking at is looking at a bunch of our housing stock being sucked up by investors. And, um, investors aren't, uh, they don't create community. I mean, y- you, you buy a house, a residential house in a residential neighborhood to be next to neighbors, not people who travel in and out and are transient. I mean, that's why we have hotel districts. And so, so when, when I, we started getting these complaints from homeowners who were living next to these, uh, Airbnbs, it, it, it made us all think twice, okay? So we, our job is to protect the citizens of Temecula. It's not to protect, uh, people who are transient through here. It's not even to make money, 'cause to be honest with you, this TOT tax, we're gonna be lucky to break even by the time we regulate and, and get a code enforcement officer and, and pay all the things we're gonna have to do to regulate this industry. So the whole money idea means absolutely nothing to me, 'cause it doesn't mean anything to the city. It literally is gonna be a net zero or net negative. So, so please understand that. You know, it, it, it's not a, it's not a dollar thing for us. Um, the other thing I kept hearing over and over again, which kinda disturbed me, is talking about running a business. We, we, uh, we wanna run a business, and I'm thinking, but you bought a residential house in a residential neighborhood. Why do you think you have the right to rent a business? So that, that was running through my head. I have six rental houses myself, all long-term rentals, and I, I know exactly what, what she was talking about. I have one squatter, I have two paying late, and it's miserable. I mean, I understand that, but that's, that's the industry I chose to be in. And so, a, and even, even if we do put this regulation through, or ordinance through, and you can't, no longer as an investor, you can still long-term rent your house. That, that is still on the table. You're not gonna lose your income. It's just gonna shift to a different kind of income. So, again, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy or heartburn for you if, for some reason, we decide to go this direction. So I would love to short-term rental my houses. I mean, but I do have serious concerns with safety of kids. I mean, for one, there is no check for, uh, uh, child abusers. You know, there's no check for, it could be a porn shoot, for all we know, taking place right next door. I mean, anybody can rent these STRs. So I'm really concerned about that. And so, you know, that's what we, when we were discussing in our, um, uh, subcommittee, um, we were, we were seriously considering these issues. And that's why, when we came to the conclusion of, um, hosted and resident hosted only, that's because now we've got a resident who's responsible for that, uh, home. And so, and they're there. And, and, you know, when, when the one guy said, which I laughed, I thought it was very funny, uh, move over, 'cause I'm sitting in the night, you know? Um, but many homes, I mean, and I, I'm thinking as a, as a guy who's aging out. I mean, I'm getting close to sixty, and I'm thinking, okay, my big house is too big, I'd like to be able to rent, you know, part of it out, make a little income. A, and it could, it could prolong people to be able to stay in their house longer by being able to Airbnb out, you know, bedrooms or whatever. And, and honestly, I, I'm not necessarily even opposed to, uh, someone who's a senior who, or someone who's a resident, who is a, um, uh, like a snowbird. And, you know, they're gone three months out of the year because they're in their RV, you know, rent out your house for three months. See, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, except for the fact that I know that that is a resident, and that neighbor or neighbors would know exactly who Bob is. And, um, if there's an issue at all, Bob's gonna get a call. And, you know, so I, I, I'm still struggling with the whole idea, the, the whole issue of still having a non-hosted or hosted, and so, but, but the, the safety concerns is huge for me. You know, I think of my grandkids, and I think of somebody different coming in, just like the one lady was saying, you know, I don't want someone staying in the bedroom right next to my kid, but it's okay to stay in the house right next to my kid. You know, and, and I, I don't know if that argument works for me, because it's like, that house next door still could be a danger to my kid, you know? And I have no real recourse, you know, other than the fact they're only gonna be there for two days, but a, a bad person can do a lot of damage in two days. So that's, that's, that's my concern with this whole issue, and I still have a lot of angst either direction, you know? Uh, I do see a security issue. Um, and, and when someone mentioned, you know, well, you're gonna drive it underground, and I'm thinking, well, that's what code enforcement's gonna do, is gonna be checking these sites, and anybody who's underground is gonna be on a site, I would imagine, and are they gonna be able to sustain a thousand-dollar fine every time they get hit? You know? I don't know, maybe. So, you know, you could go underground, but, and then the Palm Springs analogy, to me, that's not even close to the city of Temecula. I mean, we're talking an old community with a lot of older people. There's very few kids in Palm Springs, you know? So to rent a house in Palm Springs does not compare to renting a house in Temecula Hills or, uh, Red Hawk, or, you know, somewhere where there's lots of kids. And we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood. And as far as someone mentioned about, well, we pay, uh, school fees, you know, and our, our houses don't even use a school. No, the school fees don't show up until there's a student in that school. So there has to be a certain amount of students in that school to get those school fees. So our school fees may be going to somebody else, because we don't have those school, kids in our schools. So, so, I mean, that's where, you know, I, I still, I, I wanna hear from the, my colleagues, because I do struggle with the hosted, non-hosted, um, because I do think there's an opportunity for someone who's been in our, you know, who's a resident, who could take advantage of this industry, um, but at the same token, I, you know, I'm, I wanna hear from you guys.
Anybody else?
Go ahead, Zach.
No, after you. I, I don't mind going, that, that's fine.
Well...
Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I don't mind the idea of hosted, making it mandatory, um, after listening to everyone. And I understand how it, it's a revenue generator for, for you, and it's great for retired people. Um, I'm very interested in the technology, because I hadn't really thought of that. And I actually drafted our noise ordinance, and it's been many, many, many years. Um, and I don't even remember what the decibel level is, but the fact that you can have that, and it can ring your, you know, call you on your watch and tell you to come show up because they're making noise, I think that's kind of a game changer. Um, and Stu, I don't know that we, we can't mandate who buys a home in Temecula. So if they buy the home and run it as a, as a STR, are they a resident? They're a homeowner. So, but we can't preclude people coming from outside and, and purchasing property and, and then, um, you know, forming the VRBO or something. So, I don't know, there are a lot of things to consider. I'm gonna really turn this one over in my mind, now that I have some more information to go on. So thank you all for coming to participate and giving us some more information. I really like the technology idea. Um, and I understand how having, uh, an STR that is not hosted could be more problematic than one that is hosted. Um, but I just wonder if we can overcome that with the technology. And parking is gonna be a whole other issue, because it's really not right. We, you know, we're a cul-de-sac community, and people buy their homes on cul-de-sacs so their kids can play at the end of the cul-de-sac. I mean, we were the same way with our kids. So, um, parking is gonna be, I think we need to be really strict with the parking issues. And of course, the garage conversion that was advertised, garage conversions are illegal in the first place, and then to advertise it, that was not very smart, so. Um, and then I also think occupancy, and somebody was arguing in favor of occupancy, but if you don't put a limit on it, we've all seen those pictures of, of individuals who've taken attic space and done triple bunk beds, the whole length of the attic space on both sides. Uh, so what, you know, how many is too many? Is twenty people for a three-bedroom home too many? Is fifty, are, you know, you're gonna have fifty as the number? Is that not too many? So I think we're gonna have to regulate, uh, the number of people that can occupy, just for safety reasons, if for no other reason. And then also with events and things like that, that just, um, opens up a whole other can of worms, that you're gonna have more people at the, at the STR visiting for the wedding rehearsal or whatever, and, I don't know, there's a lot to think about. So I'm gonna take the new information and really, uh, go home and, and mull it over, and I'll be, uh, happy to see, you know, what we get when it comes back.
Mr. Swank?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate all the input and, and, uh, the passion behind, uh, both sides. And then obviously, thank you to Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilman Rod for their subcommittee work. Um, I made a few notes along the way, uh, nothing in any particular order. Um, you know, in doing my personal research for this, there, a lot of cities are extremely strict, uh, on, on, on these hosted, non-hosted. So non-hosted is, most cities don't even allow them. Even Portland, Oregon, uh, we think, very liberal city, um, non-hosted, not happening. Um, I do think we need to look at, you know, how we define a primary residence, especially with, uh, when we think about our military families. You know, if someone's deployed, um, do we allow them to rent their home out, uh, while they're, while they're deployed? Um, do we consider maybe capping the number in residential areas? Do we look at that, and we say, okay, you're allowed to have a certain number in, you know, in each residential tract? Maybe that's a choice. Uh, to ne- technology, I wrote quite large, 'cause that was one thing that really jumped out to me. You know, this, um, evolved from technology, right? Like, before the smartphone, STRs didn't really exist, you know? So we can use technology for good as well, so you can, uh, regulate some of this via technology. So I think we really need to look at the technology side of things and, and see how, uh, how all that works. Um, you know, the one-night minimum, you know, we, we have a two-night minimum. I'm going up to Sacramento next week, and I'm staying for one night. Um, so maybe that's something to think about, too. Maybe one night, uh, is, should be an option. Um, you know, my wife's a schoolteacher, and she has a lot of friends in the district that are moving to Menifee and Marietta and, and other cities. Um, m- maybe some of that housing stock here could go to our teachers, uh, if those rentals, those short-term rentals were on the market, people would be able to afford to buy homes and whatnot. So another thought there, uh, in my head, I try to think of, you know, and even in my daily life, is it reasonable? Is it reasonable to live next to a party house? Is it, would that be reasonable? Would you, would that be something that, when you buy your home in a neighborhood, is that, is that something that would, you would think would be reasonable? And I don't think it would. Um, a lot, a lot to think about, a lot to mull over. I mean, it's a really complex, complicated issue. Um, but I think we can get there. Um, I do prefer, um, the, the idea of an accessory, uh, short-term rental. Someone is living there, I think that's important. Um, I've used short-term rentals, uh, on, personally, and I've always stayed in hosted short-term rentals. And I didn't find it awkward. No one bumped me over in the middle of the night and told me to scoot over and then jumped into my bed. But, you know, it, it was someone that took a part of their home, and they created a separate entrance and, and created that, um, small sort of feel, uh, in their home. Um, those are two... Those are just my thoughts, no particular order.
One more comment.
Go ahead. Okay, you know, and and another guy, uh someone brought up about um uh that you would actually get more. Visitor dollars by a non-hosted versus a hosted and I I I triggered on that because if I was staying at a hosted. I would not barbecue there, I would go to Lucille's, I would go to whatever barbecue place was away from the hosted house. I would look for more opportunities outside of the home, knowing full well, once I got to the home, I knew it was gonna be like shutdown time. I mean, I was going there to sleep and that's pretty much probably what you do, right?
Exactly what I.
Yeah, so I'm looking for entertainment value out in the community, so I think it's just the opposite, I think. People who are in non-host ho- hosted homes, they cook at the house, they have barbecues at the house, they have all their entertainment value at the house. And so why go out, you know, so a hosted and a hosted home would actually. Make more uh sense uh as far as uh creating opportunity for our local businesses, so.
Well, um one of the things about being mayor is you typically, you know, I could have pulled rank and went first. Um but typically, I like to see my colleagues talk first and get all their ideas along the way, they come up with things that I. Probably uh would have said myself, so um I may be a little redundant, I'll try not to. You know, uh I'm gonna state right now, I don't even wanna see this come back. Um i- i- in all honesty, um the only reason why we exist is for peaceful, quiet enjoyment for our residents. Why this is even coming up, why anybody should have to have the phone number that they can call and. Uh there's cameras and they'll be right over, I I why anybody would have to be engaged in that as a resident is absolutely ridiculous to me. We exist as a city to provide peaceful, quiet enjoyment for our residents, period. So technology has come along and created Airbnb and it's kind of pretty cool, you found a way where. Instead of just having a long-term rental, you can have a short-term rental and make more money in a shorter period of time. So over a period of month, instead of getting your two thousand a month, you can make five or six thousand a month or whatever. So it sounds pretty cool, what a great opportunity, I'm going to start buying properties and start doing this. Well, Mr. Stewart alluded to that, our neighborhoods are not businesses, our neighborhoods are where people live to have a quality of life. We have districts where there's hotels, where this type of activity can go on. Why we would wanna burden our residential neighborhoods with parking problems, noise problems, you give my neighbors the phone number, they could call me, I'll be right over. You know what, uh we're gonna find them, eh this thing is is too complex to even enforce, i- it's it's a mess, it's a it's a mire. Now, I'm not saying it doesn't work in places and I'm not saying there's not good people running these things and that. Perhaps there's the preponderance of these um that work that work, I'm sure they work well all the time. But um you know what, we're a family-first community and um you know what, uh it it like with anything, it came up. Great source of income, it didn't police itself, it turned into a problem, now it's incumbent upon us to put it right back where it needs to be. So our residents can have peaceful, quiet enjoyment. A a couple of random comments, uh we want them staying here in Temecula, using Temecula services, we don't want them going to Marietta. No disrespect to Marietta, but if you're staying in an Airbnb in Marietta, you're probably coming to Temecula to use everything that's here anyway. All the restaurants, all the shopping, all the pachanga, all the wineries, all of that, so that doesn't move me. Uh Mayor Protem Stewart alluded to the TOT, under this program and enforcement, I have to be honest with you, um. You know, it just it just doesn't work and listen, not everything we do is to make revenue, okay, I mean, that. Our sole purpose here as a city is not to create revenue, uh the sole purpose here is to whatever we do create is to take it back to the residents. To increase the the quality of their life, that's our purpose. So anything that comes into this community that reduces the quality of life for our residents, it's incumbent for us to stop it. It really is that simple with me, we played a video earlier today of we're trying to attract doctors to come here to have local services for cancer. Great, I could just imagine that um you know, well, they I might move on a street where there's Airbnbs and party houses. It just it's not attractive, it's not who we are. I I I frankly worry about property values and selling, um uh the lady left, uh one of the ladies here. So you got three Airbnbs on your street, how do you sell your house? I I mean, what does that do to your property value, that's just crazy, I wouldn't buy a house if I knew there were Airbnbs on the street, I would. Definitely not buy that house, I'd go to another neighborhood and that would probably begin one of the first questions I'd start to ask. How could we do that to our neighborhoods, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Sorry for the bad news. Drunk drivers, we want to give drunk drivers a shorter driving distance. That's just a real wacky way of trying to enforce a law, I I mean, I would have that they wouldn't drive drunk. And um not to our neighborhoods or not to any others and if they're coming home drunk via an Uber, I'd rather they not be in our neighborhoods. Eh eh at all, um the safety issue was a big deal, um the the database you're referring to is Megan's Law. And uh there's there's no Megan's Law check, um I I I just can't imagine that, you know, and um. Pardon me, I forgot your name said so eloquently, people go out to smoke and now all these, I it's I can't even imagine being in a neighborhood with my family. Wanting to sit outside or something and there's a a house with Airbnb and a bunch of strangers just hanging around smoking, probably cursing. Hey, could you stop cursing, I got my kids here, do you even wanna have to tell that to somebody, no. So this is just kinda weird, um anyway, um a lot has already been said, so I won't I won't be redundant. But I will say this, uh I particularly, uh I compliment you on your work, it is a very complicated uh issue. I'm amused that the guy from uh Expedia, God bless him, you know, his employer, sent him over here, he had to do what he had to do. And and he feigned any sort of responsibility, but uh said if we gave him everything he wanted, they'd accommodate us on the website. I I just assumed, say, you know what, let's not have it at all and we'll all be happy, I mean, you don't have to worry about accommodating us for anything. I I just, I particularly, if this come back uh and it hosted, doesn't matter to me, I'm definitely not gonna support it. In fact, if it comes back, um y- you know, I I would I would say, let's set up a system of fining with administrative citations. Um and then if uh people, if it does go underground, um we can have a code enforcement officer that's working, able to issue those. Uh uh admin sites, if they're not paid, they go as a lien against the property. And um after so many liens, we will lien the property and that's and and it'll just keep accumulating to the point where. Per and and we don't have to stop at one thousand, I think our our administrative sites can go up to five thousand dollars per citation. Oh, so each violation?
Each violation.
And how, what's the limit on violations?
Each day is a violation.
Each day, okay, and so um at what and at some threshold point, um when we go to enforce it, we can lien the home, can we not?
Um yes, you can, but there's a there's three or four steps to get there.
Right.
They don't pay the administrative fine, you file a small claims court action against them, you get a judgment. And then through that judgment, in a civil action, you get to lien the property, you can't do it directly like you do for weed abatement or public nuisance abatement actions.
Okay, so i- is that our only source of enforcement?
Uh well, the other one that was set out was the revocation of any permit, uh if if you allow, if you don't allow them. Uh then the other thing you can do is uh initiate a uh an injunction action where you would enjoin the property owner from using his property in that manner.
Okay, so we're not anti-business, we're everything but, but understand that. All the business that we do here is secondary to providing peaceful, quiet enjoyment to every single neighborhood in this city. And that's the beginning and that's the end. That's it, so um I I appreciate the work you've done, if uh you know, the council can still have discussion. I particularly just say it continues to be not permitted and be done with it. Because this is just too complicated, this whole thing is just too complicated, it's hosted, but there's a number you can call if it gets out of line, the hours don't work. Good between because the host can't be there, what if they work at night, uh I I mean, all of this stuff, you know, it's kind of, how do you craft something that accommodates everybody? It 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 just doesn't work, it's trying to just sort of fit it in to come up with some solution and the solution really is it just. It's too bad, now there is places where it's where it's uh appropriate. You know what, Wine Country has turned itself into a venue where they're wanting that, go Airbnb in a wine country and and do that. But we're we're a family-first community, I just don't see people being put through that. Or if Marietta passes it, God bless them, you stay in Marietta and shop in Temecula. Yeah, sure, yeah, I mean, you know, however that works, to lose is kinda nice, um it just seems like. Here you can make a lot of money, but at the expense of. And that's that's kind of a bummer because I do believe there are people who who do run it real well, but um just is what it is. Anyway, that's all, are there any other comments? So this is a receive and file and so we are going to receive it and.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh Luke has one.
Yeah, there there's actually three items that we were asking for direction on.
Okay.
Um first was the fiscal impact and fee study and if we're not gonna be moving forward with a policy update, we won't. Need to move forward with that, the second is um an RFP for a third-party compliance vendor. Um which is which is still critical to uh staff's ability to enforce even the current regulation. We need that data, so we would still be looking for direction on that. Um and um secondary to that would be um a direction on increasing the fines for. These types of violations, specifically STRs, from what the current structure is, which is fifty-one, fifty, two-fifty, to a thousand dollars per occurrence.
Um Luke, I'm gonna understand that currently they are illegal in the city of Temecula.
That's correct.
Okay, so by taking all but the last action, we'd be telegraphing that we are thinking of making them legal, is that a fair statement?
No, no, so it would, even under, if we didn't change anything in the regulations, they're they're still unpermitted across the board. We would still like direction to go go out and hire a third-party compliance vendor who's gonna collect data for us, which is gonna make it easier. Easy for us to enforce the current code and additionally, on the code enforcement side, moving to up the fines from. Maximum of two-fifty per occurrence to a maximum of a thousand per occurrence, now that's important because. Two-fifty is the is the third citation, so that's as much as we can do. And many times, these these businesses are making much more than that per night, so it becomes a a situation where they can they can run it out. So we need to make it, you know, e- essentially impactful enough to where it becomes a an impactful uh fine.
I I will say one other thing, I I did find it interesting that everybody here who's spoken was aware that it's not legal in Temecula, but you went ahead and did it anyway. Uh that's just, you know, eh I just find that interesting, um under the auspices of, well, there's nowhere to pay my fa- my fee, actually, the law says it's not permitted. So um uh so if you go get the compliance officer, we don't know what he's gonna do yet, he may very well just enforce.
So the third the third-party compliance vendor is um is is really a technology company, there's a few out there. Um and we would we would go out to RFP and what they do is they collect data on all of the uh host platforms, so they're looking at. All of the individual STRs and how many nights they're, you know, all the business that's taking place and they can provide reports to us as well as location data. And tell us exactly what's going on on the ground in the STR industry in our city and that's important for us because. We're not currently set up with three code enforcement officers to go out throughout the city and and regulate, you know, three hundred to five hundred. STRs, we need this data so we can pinpoint exactly what's going on.
Would they actually, they would give the data, but would they be doing enforcement?
No, we would still, they're just they're they're essentially just providing us the information.
Okay, so right, raise the fee, get the look into getting the third, that's the third.
Third-party co- compliance vendor.
Compliance vendor, was there another issue?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, so um is there anybody that could make a motion to do that?
I would like to, uh I'd like to just get a temperature of the remaining, I I know you're against it, so. With you two, is is hosted on the table or is hosted off the table?
Well, I'm not ready to shut it down yet, I'd like to go the next step.
And that's as as a committee member, that's what I wanna know because I I wanna know, do we proceed or?
See, my, we're eh even if it's hosted, where do they park, what happens when they have to smoke outside, who's doing the safety checks? I mean, all of the things that hosted provides, um there are still things that exist, even eh eh like it was non-hosted.
Right.
Right, and so, non-hosted only puts somebody on the property that you expect to keep things under control, but they cannot keep everything under control. So to this lady here, um who mentioned, um well, I have people outside smoking and, you know, my kids are playing or they're having a party in the back and all this. Other things, hosted doesn't change that.
I I can only speak to myself and and as as far as um like a hosted, um you know, I I think having a homeowner on site is important, right? Like for from that perspective, if I if I have a I have a loft, we have a third-story loft, if I say I wanted ever rent that out, I'm gonna be there, right? So I'm gonna be able to uh sort of nip anything in the bud, but but as an end user, as someone who's used a a a hosted STR. I essentially went there to sleep, much like I use a hotel room, right, I came in and I I did, I went a bike tour um through Portland, right? So I flew up to Portland, I took the light rail to the house, I stayed the night, I got up early and and I left, you know, so I stayed one night. I I wasn't in and out, I wasn't mulling around, I don't smoke, but you know, there wasn't those sorts of issues, I think having. You know, having that homeowner on site um does offer a lot of protections, mainly they live there, right? Mainly they're they're, they have to deal with the neighbors in the neighborhood, so so that, you know, to me anyways, I'm okay with that. Cuz I feel like, you know, I can go to my, sorry, I can go to my neighbor and I can say, hey, you know, what's going on and and. They would be able to handle it, but I don't honestly don't think it would really get to that level, I think for the most part, people are gonna run out a room. And they're gonna be there, they're gonna be able to deal with some of the issues that happen, so yeah, for me, I'm okay with hosted. You know, a lot of these restrictions uh here are, you know, like you said, it's a lot, right, to have someone go out and try to deal with this. But if it's hosted, I feel like the homeowner who's living there, who has a family, who has kids, who has to get up and go to work in the morning, ha- is gonna have to deal with those issues, so. I'm still okay with the hosted.
So so let's let's discuss this, um because the way that you put it, um and the way that you've explained that you'd use it, sounds very reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds extremely reasonable, add to that, you know, somebody's coming here from New York and they wanna go to Disneyland, it, you know, them and their two, three kids. Sounds very reasonable, um it's when you start to get outside of those boundaries where it's not. So how do you control the parking issue, okay, um the safety issue? The issue of of uh, let's see if I can remember all these things, of somebody having to respond in a half an hour. The issue of the hours of operation where it has to be lights out and no noise, that some people are saying, you know, don't work. How how do you, how do you weave all that in um and still do what you're suggesting? Because, yeah, I'm kinda cool if somebody like you wanted to do it, you you know, I mean, yeah. Or the or the family wants to go to Disneyland, what we're trying to do i- i- and and then one last thing before you respond. How do you deal with that house not becoming a boarding house? You see, and then we're back to the, it it's hosted now, okay, but it turns into a boarding house, they're leasing out on a regular basis. Uh although it's limited to the hundred and twenty days, right, but they're leasing out rooms, so we have a boarding house operating in a in a residential neighborhood. Now let's, how do we, now how do we juggle all that, how how's that work?
It's complex, right, yeah, no, I mean, it's complex, I think, I do think, you know, going uh from, you know, the the non-hosted home. You do away with a lot of the parking issues, right, like you're, it's one person that's coming in their family van or whatever and. And and hopefully, there's enough space in the driveway that they park, it's not a uh a wedding party with four different vehicles pulling in.
Unless you're leasing three rooms out.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's something we look at, right, maybe the.
But you can't lease them separately.
You can't lease them separately.
Can't lease them separately, so and I think it's just like any other restrictions that we place on anything, I think we can place the restrictions and then it's gonna be up to. I think we can place the restrictions, and then it's gonna be up to whoever owns the home to abide by those restrictions. And if they don't wanna abide by those restrictions, then their choice is to not do it. Um, and if we go to hosted, I think we're gonna lose a lot. I mean, even just listening to what people said, you're gonna lose a lot of, uh, a lot of the rentals.
Yeah.
But I still wanna go the next step and just see, and, you know, s- see what happens, and we definitely have to...
What is the next step?
Well, we have to get the, we have to get the information from...
What information are you hoping for?
The next, the next step that we were proposing tonight would be to move, move forward with actual drafting of the ordinance based on this framework. That was, that was our, that was our proposed next step.
That's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
So, it would be moving forward with an ordinance.
But regardless, the, the compliance officer and the fines you want, you, you need any way to get the data and want the fines up. So, that's kind of a separate issue.
It's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Now, so, are we suggesting too that the thousand-dollar fine would be also something that would be imposed on a hosted who is in violation of, I mean, uh, so this would be across the board. You know, anybody who's doing this in a residential neighborhood is gonna be subject to these particular fines.
Not currently in the framework, in the framework, a permitted STR, so in the future, if you have a permit, we'd be working on a three-strikes rule.
Okay.
Right, so, you would be subject to a three-strikes policy, plus the established administrative citations, which is, uh, a warning for the, uh, the first violation's a warning, and then it's fifty for the next, one-fifty, and then a maximum of two-fifty. That's for the permitted side. The one thousand is, at least in the framework we're talking about today,
Right.
is really to, to, to be used for illegally operating STRs, unpermitted illegally operating STRs.
Okay.
And keep in mind too, that you are not formally approving that fine tonight, you're just asking the staff to bring it back and you'd see it and written for them.
Well, uh, number one, I think we gotta, I, I'd like to move forward to the next step, and, and then when Councilmember Ron gets back, he can add his voice to it also. Um, and if we are going to restrict these to owner occupied, I mean, the owner can only stay one place, right? So, I suppose a husband and wife could split up and each live in a separate house. Seems like a lot of trouble for me, but, and then you might get into the situation where you've got an LLC, and you have a group of owners, but still, it's still gonna be owner occupied, but, I don't know.
It's, it's all unenforceable. It, it, it is, so I can imagine, you know what, we called the owner, and they got there in forty minutes, not a half an hour. You know what, I mean, I mean, you know, it, it starts to border on, on the ludicrous, or, I was at work, I couldn't get there in time, or I was stuck on the freeway, okay?
But according to this, the owner's supposed to be onsite, is that correct?
The owner is to be onsite from nine PM to five AM.
Okay.
All right, so, they, they'd have to, yeah, you know, yeah, so it's just, it's, I don't know.
It's a lot of restrictions, and anybody that, you know, is gonna do it is gonna have to comply.
It's not enforceable, this, none of this is enforceable. You, you couldn't even get the manpower to enforce such a thing. It's just, it's, it's not enforceable.
Well, e- even, even if we didn't do this, and if you say it's unenforceable, it's not going, the underground is not gonna go away, so that's gonna be a constant, you know, a constant...
We have the compliance officer that they'll hire, who will let us know where the illicit activity is occurring, and we'll have to set up a system to where we enforce it. That, that, that's how that goes, and that would be a system of fines.
And won't we enforce, enforce some of these rules the same way?
If you could, I mean, it, it not, it becomes inherently more complex. You have too many variances with, so the answer would be to no. It's, if it's illegal, you got one thing to enforce, okay, and that's that. If you're gonna throw in all of these different, you know, it's, it's, here it is, I'm assuming, it's, what is it? Friday through Sunday, it's X hours, okay, but Monday through Thursday, it's X hours. And, and so, you just have this whole complex, I don't even know if people will, will, will read this law and abide by it. It is extremely complex. It, it even complex for an officer to, to even, to even enforce.
I, I, I guess I, I still think a hosted is, is something that could work, because especially if we have a permitted process, where they come in, they have to pull a license, and in that licensing process, um, we have an HOA, uh, buy-in, we also have a list of the rules and the regs and the fines, and so, when they walk out of that licensing process, they're well aware of everything that's going to hit them if they're not compliant. Um, and I think we can dumb it down to a very simple list, we don't, you know, it's, it doesn't have to be too complicated. But I, I do agree, I, I would like to still see some sort of, uh, vacation rentals in some form here in Temecula, because I do think it is a, um, a nice option. I mean, I come from the Midwest, uh, bed and breakfasts is what you always did. I mean, when you went to Door County, Wisconsin, you stayed in a bed, bed and breakfast, you went to, you know, anywhere of...
Cameron, Missouri.
Exactly, I mean, so, so it's a part of Americana, and, and Temecula with what we have here, to me, we are Americana too. And so, I would hate to lose out on that opportunity for that next generation to experience that kind of experience, so, um, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm with Mary Ann, I would like to go at least one more step forward and, and, you know, beat this out a little bit more.
Bed and breakfasts are allowed in Temecula.
Yeah, but that's...
They're just not allowed in residential neighborhoods.
Correct, yes.
But they're allowed in Old Town, there's some other zone, they're allowed in Jefferson Court, or they're allowed in many places.
Mike, maybe we need to look at limiting or, um, eliminating the ones that are in the housing tracts, 'cause we have many areas in town that it's, you're required to have an, you know, acre, two and a half acres, or, or more. So, maybe that would be one thing.
Explain how that would work, so you'd have more acreage, in, in, in...
You'd have more acreage, so, and it would still have to be owner occupied.
Right.
Parking wouldn't be an issue, because they'd be able to park on the property.
That's true.
Noise wouldn't be as much of an issue, because your neighbors aren't as close, but we'd still have the no- the noise would be the same, they'd still have to comply with that, but it wouldn't be so disturbing, and the visual wouldn't be the same, because her son wouldn't be looking out his bedroom window down into the pool, for the most part, and you wouldn't have to deal with the smoking aspect of it, because, you know, smoke's gonna dissipate.
How would you deal with, uh, you have two, three people spending the night, but you have more people at a party in the evening, because the land's, uh, larger?
Well, I think it's okay as long as they park on the property, um, they're not making any more noise that's, that's allowed. And, I mean, we could, we could have a curfew, we could shut it down by a certain hour if you wanted to.
So, you literally have a party venue in a rural area, let's, let's, let's put it on the ground, you're in Los Ranchitos, okay? And, uh, somebody, uh, a family rents two out of, uh, three bedrooms, okay? And, uh, two people in each bedroom, maybe three in each bedroom if you have kids, and during the day, they wanna hold a wedding, okay? So, now you have a wedding venue in Los Ranchitos.
Well, we can, we can deny that, the county has denied it in certain places. And remember again, it's gonna be hosted, so, and it's up to the host to make sure that there's compliance.
I'm not gonna argue that, 'cause I'm open to a solution, uh, just the fact that it's on larger land could be more problematic. I think the problem doesn't go away, I mean, if you're the, if you're on a two and a half acre and you're hearing somebody's party next door, I think you'd even be just as irritated, to tell you the truth.
Well, it would.
If you moved to that area, you know, to have your horse and your, and whatever, so I don't think that problem is...
But then they'd be in violation of the noise, and they'd still be subject to, to fines.
And how do you enforce that? How, how does, just run it through your mind, the little noise meter goes off, and what happens? Okay, what we're told here is that, it goes to my phone, I'll know immediately when they're violating the noise ordinance, okay?
Well, we'll know immediately too if the neighbors call, if the neighbors call the city.
What we wanna avoid is having to have neighbors call, that's, that's the whole idea, at least where I'm coming from. That's, that's, that's my point of view, anytime you're disturbing our neighbors or our community to say, well, they gotta call the police, or they gotta make a complaint, as this lady described, she's up at night, y- you know, the husband comes home, he's from Camp Pendleton, she wants to go to sleep, but she's gotta call the police, 'cause they violated the noise ordinance, I mean, that's just, it's all silliness. I, I, I can't imagine doing that, that's, 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 I don't know, I don't wanna keep using, uh, adjectives to describe it, but putting that burden on a citizen is, is, so, is, is not cor- is not right. So, the, the little noise, what's it called, the little decibel meter, somebody said? Or a noise aware, so, okay, you set it, and boom, somebody violates it, what then? Oh, it goes to the owner's phone, and I'm gonna get right there, okay, this is the owner. And we want our residents to have confidence in that, that's what we're asking our residents to have, that the owner of the, of the Airbnb, or, well, in theory, the, it's hosted, okay? So, it should never violate the noise thing, it's, it's, it's in theory, so... Anyway, um, I don't know if we have to keep beating it up, uh, you guys can decide, uh, I, you kinda know where I stand, but if you wanna see it move to the next level, what is that level? Uh, what, what Luke is saying, it's drafting the ordinance.
Well, I would send it back to staff and say, fix all these things.
Well, I think at minimum, we, we should, we should do what Luke says and get the...
Agreed.
Exactly.
Yeah, so why don't we take care of that real quick? Um, so, um, uh, somebody craft a motion for the compliance officer and for raising of the fines, bringing back those things.
I'll move that.
Okay, uh, do you wanna articulate it, Luke, so we can craft the motion appropriately?
Yeah, so, it would be to move forward with an RFP, uh, to bring on a third-party compliance vendor, um, as well as, um, move specifically to amend the ordinance to allow for a thousand dollar per occurrence fine for illegally operating STRs.
Do I have a motion, Mary Ann, is that your motion?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 So, that motion passes, uh, just go with it, city clerk, go with it. You, you know, listen, just to further the discussion a little bit, um, and so, everybody knows, I spent ten years as a code enforcement officer for the city of San Diego, okay? I've enforced all of these things, all of these building codes, all of these zoning codes. This is not enforceable, it will drive some, an officer nuts, okay? To go out there and go, well, you know, they didn't get there in a half hour, and the owner was supposed to be there, but they weren't, but I was on the freeway, oh, I was at work, my daughter was in the hospital, I, I, I mean, I could just, where do you go with that? Sorry, I have to give you the...
There's your ticket for a thousand dollars.
Pardon me?
Here's your ticket for a thousand dollars.
Fair enough, okay, it just, it's impossible to enforce, this is what I'm trying to do.
Well, I guess I would say a couple of things, thank goodness this isn't San Diego, 'cause I wouldn't have wanted to be a code enforcement officer in San Diego either. Um, you know, when we drafted the, um, medical marijuana ordinance, we, we said something that I thought was very Temecula-like, and that was, we don't wanna make criminals out of the people who really need it. And we've heard from a few people tonight that this is something that they really need, um, in order to keep their home. Um, so, I don't know, in that same vein, I, I know there probably aren't medical issues at stake here, but how many, how many of these did we think we have? Three hundred?
We have two hundred and twenty-four currently, but it is seasonal.
Fluctuates.
Okay, two twenty-four, um, by completely eliminating it, you are gonna eliminate a source of income from, there have to be some people in there that need that income in order to keep their home. So, um, I'd still like to see staff come back with something, and then we can discuss it as a body of five, and I, I, I know you're not gonna change your mind, but maybe we'll find, um, maybe we can find a comfort zone for you in some way.
So, can I suggest we just throw it back to this, uh, subcommittee along with staff, and we try to hammer out something else?
That'd be the way to go.
All right.
Just fix it, Stu.
Right.
Yeah, um, and, uh, um, if I said, you know, listen, you know what my concerns are? So, they can be swayed, okay?
Absolutely, do you have any concerns?
Yeah, a- and, um, I guess my suggestion to the subcommittee would make it as concise as possible. Um, the more variances in here, the more, it, it, it can't be regulated, so it has to be very, very, very concise. And, um...
And if, and if they show up, if the police have to show up, and it's after nine o'clock or weekdays or whatever, and the owner isn't there, then there will be a fine to pay.
Yeah, you know, though, if we, I, I'm telling you, if you have to have, send a patrol car over to somebody's house like that, they're already, it's already costing us, those officers are not on the street where, where we want them, they're regulating a party. I just, it's, it's, uh, anyway, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, go ahead, Zach.
I will beat the dead horse.
Go ahead, beat that horse, Zach, beat it.
Couple of questions, just thoughts, if, if we send this back to the subcommittee, which just sounds like we're gonna do that, and it gets tightened up, and we can kinda wrap our heads around it, we're not obligated to vote in favor of that, right?
No.
So, we could all, we just vote no, thank you, and we're back to where we are, square one, right?
Yeah.
STRs are illegal.
And I have some real concerns about certain areas too, so...
And then, uh, to sort of piggyback on that, let's just say it comes back tight, we approve it, and, and we roll with, uh, hosted STRs, and it's not working out, there's nothing that stops us from bringing it back and saying, we're done. We tried, and I'm sorry, but it didn't work.
Yep.
Exactly, and we can, you know, and we, we have had, um, issues where we set a, a date certain, we said we'd bring it back in six months and we'll reconsider it, but we do that anyway. If there's an issue with something, it's gonna come back anyway, whether it's six months, or four and a half months, or three months, or, or whatever, so, it'll come back anyway.
I think also, and Zach, you brought up a good point, um, ninety-five percent of the time, the subcommittee does have the, we do everything by subcommittee, folks, because it helps us get a lot of work done. And ninety-five percent of the time, the council's gonna take the subcommittee's recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
There are times when something is so squirrely, like with the cannabis issue, it's just too many moving parts, this is, this is that as well. So, I don't even think, you, you said it, you came here with, with...
My head was still spinning.
Exactly, exactly, and so, um, you, you bring up a, a, a good point. Um, perhaps we can tighten it up and, and, and see where it goes.
Well, this is a case of, we are reinventing the wheel, because every city that does this has to personalize it for their city, their residents, and what everyone needs, so...
Okay, so, um, just go ahead, Mister...
Point of clarification, so the direction is to send it back to the subcommittee to tighten up a hosted, short-term vacation rental ordinance.
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't craft it as that, I, I would say that you've heard all the comment here tonight. I presume you've wrote, you've, you've made...
That's what I, that's my one question, that's my one question is...
I wouldn't go hosted, Mike.
I hear, I hear three people say, I'm comfortable with a hosted ordinance, and I hear one person, I don't want anything. And so...
Yeah, I, I, let me change the I don't want anything, as I could be persuaded if, if my concerns are addressed. I don't think they can be, but, but, but it would be disingenuous for me to say...
Yeah, there's a huge difference between an ordinance that allows unhosted...
Yes.
And an ordinance that allows hosted.
And I would, I would venture a guess to say that the, that the three people, um, opted to go hosted, thinking that that might help you.
I would venture to say, unhosted is off the table.
Okay.
Okay, is, do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah, I, I, I have a hard time with it in, in a residential neighborhood, I really do. I mean, you, you summed it up, so I won't elaborate much more.
Do, do you concur?
Yeah.
And do you, okay, so, unhosted is off the table.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're talking about hosted, I think what you do, Greg, is go back to the subcommittee with all of these comments, and just hash it out, and come back, and have the subcommittee come back with another version of some sort, knowing everything that we talked about. I don't think you try to draft an ordinance coming out of the next subcommittee meeting, but...
Understood.
You have another one of these, is that fair enough?
Uh, understood, but I, I needed clarification on whether hosted or unhosted. So, it's, it's clear now, it's, it's hosted only.
Well, and I think the hosted makes it easier to enforce, it's still a lot to enforce, but I think having the hosted makes it easier.
I think that's a good place to start, to start to tighten things up, so, um, let's, let's go with that. Is there any other comment on this? It's a good discussion, um, staff, any more comments?
No, Luke, do you have what you need?
I have what I need.
Fee study, impact fee, is that still off a bit?
No, that, we'll discuss that with the subcommittee.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think everything else stays, everything else stays.
Yeah, okay, um, good discussion, um, the, you know what, not everything we do here is easy, a lot of times, we have some fun, but when we get serious, we have to get serious.
Did we vote?
Huh?
Did we vote?
Yeah, we did, you don't, you don't need to vote on...
You voted, no.
You voted on the two items.
Got it, okay, so, um, that moves us, um, let's see, uh, da, 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 commission reports, uh, Mister Sullivan, anything? Mister, uh, Yeoman?
Just a personal note, as a recent cancer survivor, I appreciate this very much.
You betcha.
I'll second that too, 'cause I'm six months and one week to the... I'll second that too, because I'm six months and one week today.
Mr. Willis, good to see you.
You know, I had a one-hour speech prepared for this evening. Uh, it shrunk by the speaker, uh, and and so quickly. Uh, all I wanna tell you is from last night's meeting, we did, uh, appoint a chair and vice chair. Eric Levine will be my vice chair, so I'm super excited to take on this role. And we have taken our subcommittees down from eight to four. We think that'll be more impactful on the direction of, uh, Mr. Hawkins. So, uh, we look forward to a great year, and thank you for your support.
Sounds good. Um, public safety.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, March twenty-first, I can't go without saying this, light it up, yellow and blue, here at City Hall.
I'll be here.
You and me.
That's right.
Speaking, supporting World Down Syndrome Day, three twenty-one, please come out and support.
Yeah, please do that.
Thank you.
Please do that. Thank you, Eric, for remembering that. Um, city manager go home or is he coming back in? Okay, all right, he's 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 gone with the wind. He did a Scarlett O'Hara. All right, let's see here, uh, public safety report, Jody.
What's a Scarlett O'Hara?
She's gone with the wind, okay.
Okay, for, um, the fire department, we responded to over seven hundred and fifty calls for service in February. Um, I'd like to remind the public to go to our fire department page on the Temecula website and register for the reverse nine-one-one emergency notification system. If you enter your cellphone, you'll be notified in case of emergency in the city of Temecula. Um, the reminder safety tip this month is, uh, electrical space heaters.